Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 5th, 2016, meeting of the Edina City Council, and followed by the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority Meeting, which we will call to order at the appropriate time. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Havland.
Here. With respect to the meeting agenda, the city manager is recommending one adjustment, and I wanted to get council's thoughts on it. After the public hearings, we move into the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and we can help with some sequencing off of the public hearing regarding 66 West. If we move items D and E out of under Roman VIII up to the top, so that the sequence would be DEA, as shown. Are people comfortable with that? So that the -- that would allow us to have the folks that are here regarding this 66 West matter to kind of sequence themselves a little bit better.
I'll move the adoption of the agenda modified as you just described.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And next, we have community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council regarding a matter that's not otherwise -- that's not on the agenda this evening?
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Grouse, and I live at 5513 Park Place. And I've spent some time up at the legislature this year. Came across a bill from Senator Franz and Senate File 2345, and found a House Companion Bill 2401. They're virtually identical bills. They're titled "City of Edina: Approval of 2014 Special Law." And I have a couple of questions. Why are these bills being introduced? And what is the purpose, or what is to be accomplished by these bills? Thank you.
Anyone else for community comment? Manager Neal, do you want to address these issues later during council and --
Yes.
-- comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We've got a consent agenda. There's approximately eighteen -- eighteen items on the consent agenda. Member Stewart, member Staunton have said they would like to remove items J, and then member Staunton would like to remove item N. Member Brindle, member Swenson, any other items that you want to remove, want to remove from the consent agenda?
So you're doing J, N, and?
J and N as in Nancy.
Just two.
Just two. I don't have anything to remove.
I'll make a motion to approve A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, K, L, M, O, P, Q, and R.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Thank you. And then, with respect to item J, member Stewart, this is the proposed resolution approving the cooperative agreement, or potentially approving the cooperative agreement between the City of Edina and the county, Hennepin County, regarding the reconstruction of West 66th Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Member Stewart.
It's not my intention to throw a wrench into the works on things that people are doing. I just want to make sure that we have good planning and a good process for addressing the needs and the upcoming needs that we have. It seems to me that as we've talked about development projects, we've got potentially three corners of that intersection at York and 66th that are likely to be redeveloped sometime in the not-too-distant future. And that intersection is a very unfriendly intersection for pedestrians, cyclists, and I think is -- can even be improved from a passenger car perspective. Mom's calling.
Familiar ringtone, anybody?
So, the -- it seems to me that the county ought not spend funds to fix the road that goes right up to that intersection if the entire intersection needs to be redone. And my fear is that if they create something that they really fall in love with now with respect to that little chunk of 66th that goes to that intersection, that they will be reluctant to actually address the genuine needs of the whole intersection in the near future, which is something that I think is imminent. So I want to make sure that -- I don't know if it's appropriate for staff to talk to the county about that. I don't know if it's appropriate for us to vote one way or another on this particular thing, so that money doesn't get unwisely spent now and prevent us from using it to fix the intersection in the future.
I think it might help to have Director Milner address this issue, because we are being requested to adopt this cooperative agreement by resolution.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Stewart, to answer your question, the road improvements end at our corporate limits, so right at Xerxes Avenue, so there's no changes to the roadway up to that intersection. So they're not completing anything that would affect any of our hopes and dreams for that intersection. They are adding a missing sidewalk pedestrian facility on the north side, just from the corporate limits up to that northeast corner. So they're building quite an extensive trail network, pedestrian network along 66th, and they just want to finish the last 300 or 400 feet to get them up to the intersection where the signals are. But nothing in the roadway is going to be done as part of this project. It's not included in this cooperative agreement. It's just that trail facility to fill in one of the missing gaps as they enter our community.
All right. And, Mr. Milner, they wouldn't then say, gee, we like where that trail is, we just spent money to put it where it is, and if it needs to be adjusted to fix the intersection, we're not going to do that? Or I'd hate to see future planning compromised by current planning.
Yeah. And we've been in discussions with the county already, just to your exact point you mentioned earlier about all three of those corners. Which ones can we do things, which ones are potentially going to be much more difficult? This is probably the most difficult one, just with that really tight angle there. So if we have to do something, there's not a huge investment made on this corner with a 12-foot, two-minute's trail. So there's stuff that if we had to, it's not a huge loss of county funds at that point.
All right. I think that addresses my concerns. Member Staunton, did you have any additional?
My concerns were the same, so thank you for articulating them.
Good. Would one of you care to move Resolution 2016-38?
So moved.
And second.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried.
I just have one quick thing on item O.
Let's take item N first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we were done.
No. Member Staunton has a concern about item N. We'll go to that now. Member Staunton.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is this is the second reading of an ordinance that gives us the ability to temporarily, or for an event, dispense alcohol at Braemar Ice Arena. And my only question is really whether, as we're making a change to the ordinance, and then we're permitting this to happen on a particular occasion, my question is whether in future situations where we want such events to be able to dispense alcohol, will they have to come back to the council for a resolution approving it each time?
Members Staunton.
Yes, we would. We would need to come back to the council. We are asking for the temporary dispensary only for the NAHL event for the next three years. So any other events, we would be required to come back to council.
So this isn't throwing the door wide open to continuous dispensing of alcohol at Braemar?
Absolutely not. We have no intention to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Director Katry, the NAHL event and the Robertson Cup are the exact same things, right? Okay.
It is. Yes, absolutely. Sponsored by the NAHL.
And you want to explain what the NAHL is for folks?
It's the North American Hockey League. And the Robertson Cup is the end-of-the-season tournament, and this is the first year that it's being held at a neutral site. And we applied to an RFP, and we're selected to host for the next three years, assuming all goes well for the first year.
Good. Member Brindle, O was actually affiliated item, so why don't you?
It is. It is. And there --
Come in, as long as Director Katry's up here.
There is a change to the resolution that I requested, but I don't see it here. And is it on the dais here?
I'm sorry, it is not. Adding the 2016.
Yeah. So I want to be sure that the resolution that we adopt tonight, that the final sentence of the second paragraph ends with the years commencing May 11 to 15, 2016. And so I want to add the year on that, so that in the three years commencing the date specified, that the dates specified include the year.
Absolutely. We'll make that change.
All right. Thank you.
Let's go back to N. And, member Staunton, would you care to move N?
So moved.
Is there a second? Member Stewart, you want a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All right. We had a motion to second on four N. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And I believe that completes everything on the consent agenda this evening. And next, we'll go to special recognitions and presentations. And the first thing we have in that section of the agenda, there are two items this evening. And our own MJ Lamon is here with a letter from Oasis for Youth, and is going to talk to us a little bit about the Edina Employee Wellness Challenge and the drive for Oasis for Youth. Ms. Lamon, welcome.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I have a short presentation on an event, an employee event, that we had, which we called City Olympics. And this was actually a successful event, so we want to share a little bit. For the past six weeks, the employees participated in the City Olympics, which was our 2016 Wellness Challenge. We had several different events that took place, and one of the unique components of this event was border battles. Border battles actually consisted of five different events that competed City of Edina employees against Eden Prairie employees. And these events were the beanbag toss, which we did at Braemar Field, pickleball, which we held at Eden Prairie Community Center. We had basketball, that was also at Eden Prairie Community Center, and then golf, that was at the Braemar Dome, and trivia, which was right here in the City Hall Council Chambers. As you can tell, we were victories. But the entire event, it was a huge success. We had city spirit. I heard from many people that they were excited to meet other employees or get to know other people better, and so we were happy with the results in addition to winning. When we started this, we hoped about 50 employees would actually participate. We ended up with 93 employees, and so we had 20 individual City of Edina teams. We had great participation, and almost every single person participated in at least one border battle. Today, I also want to highlight one of the other events. When we started this, we knew we wanted to have a component with a drive or giving a way to give back. And so I contacted Oasis for Youth, who, as you all know, is one of our Human Services recipients. And they did have a need. They provided me with this list, these pantry starter kits, youth that needed some of these items, and how could we get them to them. So I told her, don't get your hopes up. We've done a drive before. We're not sure how successful we're going to be, but we're going to go for it. And the opposite happened. We were overwhelmed with all of the items that were donated by all of the employees. It was overflowing in the administration office. There is some special recognition to give to this event. Team Rickshaws, who consisted of Steve, Peter, Tom, Dave, and Sam. These guys actually donated just themselves as one team, 52 baskets and bins, and 260 items. So special recognition to that. This is actually the day of the delivery, so the last day that we collected the items. We loaded them up, and we took them over to Oasis for Youth with a team of employees. Overall, we donated 176 baskets, garbage cans, and over 1,086 items to Oasis for Youth. So also with me today is Nicole Mills, who's Executive Director of Oasis for Youth. She just wants to share a success story of how our drive helped them out.
Good. Thanks.
Hello. Again, my name is Nicole Mills, and I'm the Executive Director at Oasis. We did have a hard time finding places for all those things to go, which was a good problem to have. We were able to -- it was really great to work with MJ, just a pleasure. I think as public servants, one of the great things about what we get to do is give back. So it was just a joy to see all that, and it was joy for our team to hand out items. We literally used those items to kind of leverage support, right? So one of the things we get to do, and got to do, and will continue to do with those things, is give them to young people to take where they're staying. So what it does, it helps -- they use those items to bring back home, so they're able to continue to stay longer where they are, and it helps spread the resources. So just already, three young people, we've given a basket of items, and they were able to stay where they were longer. So your team did that for us, and we are very grateful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mills.
While MJ's standing there, ready to speak again, I just want to tell you that she led a small team. Who else was on your team, MJ, that put this together? Who were the key people?
Terry Wilson.
Okay.
Terry Wilson, Heather Branigan, Amanda Clark, and Mia Vicente.
Great. They did a great job. There was a lot of interaction with the City of Eden Prairie to put this together. We had events here, they had events there, and we won. We mentioned that, right? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. It was great. It was great.
What was your event, Mr. Manager?
I happened to be the trivia master for both, so that was the master of ceremonies.
I can see it.
Yeah. Thanks.
That was good.
That is correct. I only ask -- I don't answer -- I only answer questions from you. I ask a lot of questions from you.
Was that with your Irish kilton?
Yeah. Absolutely not. No. No.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Lamon, as well. Great report. Next in this portion of the agenda, we have David Fisher coming forward. I've got a proclamation to read as he comes forward regarding Building Safety Month, May 2016. Whereas the City of Edina's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy, efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas building codes driving growth through innovation, resilience, and safety, the theme for Building Safety Month 2016 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina does hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage Edina citizens to join with other communities in participating in Building Safety Month activities across the nation. Is there a motion to adopt a proclamation?
So moved.
A motion, second, to adopt a proclamation? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Mr. Fisher, I'll hand you the proclamation, and I think you've got some things to report out for us. Our Chief Building Official, David Fisher. Thank you.
Chief Building Official, Dave Fisher, I don't really have a lot to say, but thank you for our proclamation. Every year in the construction season of May, and we, this city is extremely busy, as you know, and so we like to promote safety, and this is a positive way for us to get in front of you as well, to promote safety. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Fisher? All right. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Oh, Manager Neal.
Just as a metric to describe the workload that Mr. Fisher and his group are under, last year, we had $272 million of new building estimated market value added to our tax base. That's the most ever in the history of Edina. So Dave and his group have been very busy. I'll also note that the group that was -- you saw the picture of the Rickshaws, who are our top-performing group in the border battle challenge, and work for David. Those are his -- that's part of his group.
I was their cheerleader. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, David. We're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we have two matters in front of us. One of them is canceled, so 7B will be removed. That is a Galleria-related matter. And so we're on 7A, and I think Mr. Newendorf has this matter to give us the background. It's the 66 West Tax Income and Financing District Matter. Mr. Newendorf, and then we have, I think, Nick Anhut from Ellers will be assisting the council as well, and the rest of the folks in the audience.
Thank you. We're live. Yes, the item before you tonight, this is one of three items that we'll be discussing in companion to one another. But the first one is Resolution 2016-40, and this has to do with a proposed 66 West TIF district, as well as modifications to an existing TIF district called Southdale 2. Tonight, we'll be having a public hearing to discuss the new TIF district possibly, as well as the changes to the existing. So what I thought I'd do is wrap up a presentation that summarized a little bit about why we're here, what the project is that we have in mind, remind folks a little bit about what TIF is, how it works, and then dive into some of the background as well. The Southdale 2 TIF district has been around for about four years. I thought I'd revisit some of that, the impetus that led to that. And then we cut to the chase and look at the TIF plans that are in front of you tonight in your packet. I realize it's a very lengthy packet, so we're going to summarize it here, and then we'd have the public hearing. So throughout the evening, I'm joined by our experts in the redevelopment field, Jay Lindgren at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, Nick Anhut, and Jessica Cook at Ellers. But the key reason why we're here tonight is to talk about affordable housing, and affordable housing in Edina, how we can make it happen. Last year, the city passed a policy that encourages the creation of new affordably-priced homes. And most people in the field realize that it's easy to say you want affordability, it's very difficult to make it happen, to find the financing to actually make it possible to provide a reduced affordable rent when your costs are the same. In 2014, Beacon Interfaith Housing approached the city with a proposal to build a project called 66 West, located at 3330 West 66th Street. There was quite a number of deliberations going through planning and rezoning it and modifying the comprehensive plan to allow it, and that was finished up, I believe, in late 2014. And in 2015, we got to the next step of the conversation, and that is how you finance it. We had a work session with City Council in early 2015, discussed several different ways how it could be financed. We realized that it needed a lot of different partners. They already -- Beacon, the developer, already brought to the table a fair amount of private donations, philanthropic donations, to keep the project in operations. But they really need to focus on the financing. So this image shows the site plan that was approved about a year and a half ago. As I mentioned, the zoning approvals are secured and committed. This is a facility that serves teenagers and young adults that had formerly been homeless. So our guests from Beacon are here tonight to help describe the project and where they are with it. But these are apartments. Initially, there was some confusion about, is it a shelter? Do they drop in? What does this place look like? And it's not like that. It's an apartment building where you sign a lease, you have a job, you have an income, but you need a hand-up. And this basically fits that niche. These are renderings that were approved. The one on the lower left is actually the back. That's a new addition that would be constructed. And then the rendering on the right is basically the remodeling of the existing structure, which most recently had been the TCF bank. So I had mentioned early on that affordable housing can be very difficult to finance. You can't just go to the bank and say, hey, I need a loan for $11 million. Typically, they take at least eight different financial sources: state, county, federal, city, private monies. When the City Council discussed city involvement from a financing perspective, the city made a pledge to consider making a TIF investment in this in the range of $550,000, provided that other people came on board. And when we passed that resolution in mid-2015, we basically gave the developer the challenge that we can be supportive, we can consider support for this, if you can find all the other pieces to make your project whole. And they were successful in that. Last fall, they secured all the financing. They were successful in their request to the state, counties, and other folks. So we decided to get rolling and live up to our pledge, and that's what we're here for this evening. This is a copy of the sources and uses, or the budget for the project. On the right, you'll see those are all the different financing sources. I believe there's nine different sources. The city's TIF contribution is around 5% of the project, so it's not a huge stake. But for projects like this, every dollar matters. If you've got 95% of the financing, you don't have a project. You need 100% of the financing, and they have those pieces in place. So when it comes to TIF, this is a slide that we showed recently. TIF is tax increment financing, and it's basically a way to take taxes that are generated from the improved property. They're going to be remodeling it and put a pretty significant addition on it. That addition will pay new taxes that aren't there today, today. And with a TIF district, you can take those taxes to help fund that project. Now, the base taxes, the taxes that are paid today on the existing building, are still paid, and they still go to the city and the schools and the county and everybody else. But it's those new taxes, those are the ones that we can use with the appropriate mechanisms in place to make projects like this possible. There's two reasons why state law says you can consider TIF, and we're using the one on the left here. The first one, where state law indicates that you can use TIF to help induce or cause a development that would not otherwise happen. You've heard of the "but-for" test. So but for this financing, would that project happen? You can also use TIF to finance public roads, streets, public infrastructure like that. But for this project tonight, we're really primarily focused on getting the project built. And anytime we talk about tax increment financing, it's important to recognize that there's three very fundamental steps. The first is creating the district. That enables the legal tool. That's what we'll talk about tonight. The second step, we're actually also going to talk about tonight, and that's getting the project built, directing funds to a specific project. So we'll be talking about both of these this evening. And almost in summary, why should we consider TIF here? Again, I point back to the city policy that we adopted less than a year ago to really encourage affordable housing to be constructed. The city made a pledge to consider financing the project if the other lenders came on board, and they're all on board, so now it's up to us. The city's been very strategic and cautious about using tax increment financing. This map shows the three current districts that we have. And then the bar chart shows what the City of Edina tax base looks like in regard to TIF compared to some of our other peers. So we're down about 1.4% in 2015. About 1.4% of our tax base was contained in a TIF, very, very, very low compared to our peers. Now, that number does fluctuate from year to year and decade to decade, but we've been pretty cautious about using tax increment financing. When we did decide to use it was 2012, and this gets into the history a little bit. There was a one-time state legislation available to municipalities throughout the state of Minnesota that really was focused on stimulating new investment in the state and new jobs. So the city responded and created an Economic Development District in April of 2012. It's an eight-year term. That's what state law provides for, for these types of districts. And the opportunity to use this law was really narrow. Again, the point from the state was to create immediate investment and immediate jobs. So we created the district in April. The work had to begin by July 1st, and it had to be in the ground, finished by the end of the year. So this was the project where we worked with the Simon Properties to really do a complete refresh of them all. In 2014, we sought legislation In 2014, we sought legislation, special legislation, to use those TIF monies that were being generated for an additional purpose, recognizing that there's lots of public requirements, lots of public needs and requests in that area. The state legislature responded, and they passed a new special law for Edina in 2014 that allowed tax increment from this district to be used to finance affordable housing projects. The first project that was anticipated to be funded with this mechanism was the 66 West. So that was the special law that we had a few years ago. Unfortunately, we also had a clerical oversight, and in short, we had the law passed, we ratified it locally, we did all the public noticing, and we missed a deadline. We were supposed to have mailed a photocopy of all the approved stuff by a specific date, and we missed that date. So just to make sure that everything is on the up and up, our legal counsel suggested that we go back and have the state legislature reaffirm the special law. And as we've done that, there's a House bill pending and a Senate bill pending. When we've talked to the folks at the League of Minnesota Cities, as well as other peers that we bump into when we're in St. Paul, they kind of shake their head and say, yep, my city did that once too, and we had to go and do the same thing. So this seems to happen, unfortunately, on a somewhat routine basis, and the remedy is fairly routine. So that's the House Bill 2401 and the Senate Bill 2345 that are pending. Sometimes you get the question of why the city got involved anyway. Why did we, in 2012, why did we do the Southdale TIF? And as many folks will recall, 2006, 2007, 2008, the mall was probably at its low point. The graph that I put up here doesn't measure the shoppers or the revenue or the fun times that people had there, but it measures the tax base. So these are the tax valuations, the estimated market value of the mall. 2003, 2005, 2006, it was pretty stable, but there was a lot of ownership changes in a relatively short time due to mergers in the shopping mall industry, and you can notice that the value of the property kept declining as it bounced around from owner to owner. They didn't put money back into it. There's, as we know, the Twin Cities are a highly competitive marketplace, and Southdale just wasn't keeping up. In fact, they were going down. So not only were they having, they were losing tenants, there was an increase in criminal activity. I think even more harmful was the perception that it wasn't a safe place to be. I don't know if the crime statistics actually bore that out, but a few stories made it a place that people were not excited to go to, shoppers or residents. So that's when the city intervened, when we had this opportunity. In 2012, we entered into an agreement with Simon Properties, who currently owns the mall, and we agreed, the city agreed, to give them a $5 million loan at 0% interest, provided that they do a couple things: make at least a $15 million investment into all the public areas, so not the tenants, not the, you know, not the back-of-the-house spaces, but the public areas that everyone can enjoy, and they needed to do it quickly. It wasn't just a paint job, it wasn't just new signage, it was really trying to transform that property. And they responded. We had hoped that this investment would, number one, halt the decline of the property, but we had really hoped to revive the shopping center for the enjoyment of residence, make it a place that people wanted to go to, and provide reassurance to the neighbors and investors that this greater Southdale area wasn't going downhill, that it was going to go back up. And this chart on the right side shows what happened. So the valuation of the property had really plummeted. It hit the low point in 2012. After the mall owners put the money back into it, there was the spin-off development like we had hoped would happen with the new apartments and some other properties in the area, spitting themselves up to match what was happening. So today, the mall itself is almost back to where it was. We're not quite there. The valuation is at $190 million, so we're not quite to the 2005 era, but it's pretty striking to show what happened before the TIF was created, and then what happened after. This TIF district can get a little bit confusing, and so to start the confusion, I thought I'd provide a map, hopefully, to clear it up. As we know, the city of Edina is served by many different school districts, many different watershed districts, a number of different taxing agencies, and the Southdale 2 TIF district includes all the properties that are shown here in yellow. There's about 301 parcels, over 200 acres of raw land, and about half of it is in the Edina School District, number 273. About half of it is in the Richfield School District. It's, the watershed boundary straddles here. So the map, I thought I'd put that up there for reference. But rather than focusing on the confusion of the boundaries, I think it's more important to look at what's happened there. So in the last four years, we have four new projects that are finished, about half of them in the Edina School District parcels with one Southdale place, and half of the mall. I kind of just assumed half would be in one district. And then on the Richfield School District side of the line, they have a couple projects with, the Onyx is coming online, the mall is coming online, and then the Southdale Medical Center expansion is there. So that's what's finished, but what's even more exciting is that there's seven additional projects that are pending. And while I don't think the TIF district can take sole responsibility for this, we believe that the TIF district started the return, the resurgence of interest in this area. Today, the estimated market value has increased by about 26% across the entire district. So from a decline of about 40% to 50%, now we're upwards on a pretty significant trajectory. These are some illustrations of the projects that are finished. As I mentioned, the value of the mall properties are up about 60% since we started this work. The value of all the properties in this district are up over 26%. While there still are some vacant spaces in Southdale, and the management is working diligently to get those filled, the vacancy rate is the lowest that it's been for years, if not for decades. And then, another point of excitement for the community is that all this new investment is adding up to over $140 million of investment in the ground in Edina. So that's really the good news part of the story. Looking at some graphs, the graph on the left splits that growth by school district, which is, you know, kind of an artificial boundary, it's all Edina. But in the Edina School District, the market value of these properties is up about 46%. On the Richfield boundaries, or on those parcels in that district, it's up about 35% in only four years. And then the chart on the right shows the taxes that have been collected, and they're split up by the school district, and then what's kept in that TIF. Because I mentioned, we did do a TIF loan to Simon. That money comes from somewhere, and that's the tax increment. So the bar chart on the right is divided by the green, which are tax revenues that are retained by the Edina School District. The purple and the blue are taxes that are retained by the Richfield School District, and then the red are those new taxes that are retained by this district to repay that loan. So from a TIF perspective, if you work on TIF projects and you use that as a tool, this is the kind of growth you like to see, where you've got a strong base and you're growing. So shifting away from the history into why we're here tonight, we're here tonight to talk about creating a new district for this affordable housing project, recognizing that the area's on an upward trajectory. One of the public hearing items this evening is the creation of a new TIF district, and this is one parcel, it's where the 66 West project is located. The map on the left shows the location in the city, and then on the right shows the parcel itself. It's just under one acre. The land use is consistent with our comp plan, affordable housing, multifamily. The district is proposed to be a maximum term of 26 years. That's maximum as defined by state law. And then the companion change is to remove that one parcel from the Southdale District. The way that the special legislation was written in 2014, they said in order to use that legislation and bring the dollars into these parcels, you had to create a new standalone district. So while it might not be the most efficient way to do paperwork, that's the way that the special law was written. So that's what we're proposing tonight, is to take the one parcel out of Southdale 2 and put it into 66 West. So the accompanying changes would be reflected in the Southdale 2 TIF plan, reduce it by one parcel. The term stays the same, eight years is the maximum, and that's what's expected necessary for the Simon Mall to repay its $5 million loan. The TIF project, though, would be expanded in scope slightly to address this new affordable housing component. The TIF budget remains the same at about $8.5 million. And then we're also proposing to modify the pooling limitations, and this gets in the weeds a little bit, but state law has changed to allow an additional 10% pooling for these types of districts. And what that means is the amount of TIF monies you can use that are generated in the district, but you can use them outside of the district. Again, there's 1,000 different details of tax increment financing, but that's the one that has any relevance to us here tonight. So I mentioned, those are the two actions that are under consideration at this time. The public hearing will consider both the establishment of the new TIF district, as well as the related changes or modifications to the Southdale 2 TIF. We have accompanying resolutions if you move forward with these. And then separately, there's a separate action that would actually direct the funds to the developer, to the Beacon Housing Development, and that's a separate item. Certainly, it's all tied into this, that's the reason that we're here talking about this tonight, but that is a separate agenda item that would be considered after the public hearing. So with that, I am ready to answer any questions. I mentioned I have our experts from Ellers and Dorsey &amp; Whitney, and also representatives from Beacon here.
Questions for Mr. Nundorf at this point in time? Oh, I think it's a very thorough presentation. I don't think we have any questions at this point in time. Yeah, Member Stewart.
Mr. Nundorf, the chart that you showed with the 35% increase over four years in the tax base in Richfield and the 46% increase in the tax base for Edina, that's great. For this particular parcel, this is kind of a micro TIF district. I would be surprised if in this instance, we achieved those kind of results. Am I correct in believing that?
That's a great question. I have not looked at it specifically, but I would imagine that the increment from that parcel, the 66 West parcel, is probably zero. In the last couple of years, it went from a bank to a vacant property. It's currently owned by a nonprofit, so I'm not sure if it's even...
So if it goes up to a dollar, it's increased by an uncalculable percentage.
Theoretically, but we're still assuming that it starts off as a bank property. So, but yeah, it is not shared in this growth like other parcels have.
With respect to one of the slides, you had the TIF budget at $8.37 million. Would you explain for folks what that means, what that entry means?
Sure thing. So one of the requirements of the state TIF law is that you establish a budget or a spending plan to guide the use of those TIF monies. Now, it's a little bit different than the budget you would develop for your home or for a city, frankly. I believe there's about six line items that talk about public improvements, which they don't call public, they call "other," which is kind of odd. It talks about interest, it talks about land acquisition, what else am I missing? Utilities and site improvements are two other categories, so they're very broad categories. But essentially, when you adopt, when a city adopts a TIF plan, you are adopting the maximum expenditures, and that's in a way to protect yourself. You don't want to overspend. I think in the past, some cities certainly have overspent, and then they find that they can't repay those monies back. So it's a spending plan to make sure that the investments that the city makes are in line with the revenues that are actually likely to happen.
And speaking of the revenue that's likely to happen, do you have any projections on that?
The, I think I've had a slide on that. So currently, actually, I don't know if this is what I want to speak to, but currently, we are collecting in that district, in addition to the base taxes that go to the schools and the cities and counties and everyone else, about $2.4 million a year in incremental taxes. That's really significant. Now, some of the key reasons, the parking lot that was across from the Weston had a value increase, I think of over 1,000%, when it went from a parking lot to a $55 million apartment building. Similar for the Southdale Medical Center, it was a parking lot, now it's a four-story Class A medical office. Those are the two biggest drivers. And while the mall itself certainly has grown, it started from a decent point and just went up. But when you start from zero, or close to zero, and put a $55 million building on it, that's where you really get that growth. So we're estimating that for the next couple of years, we'll probably stay at about $2.5 million in new revenues that are generated. If we get another project that comes in ahead of schedule, maybe that would increase, but we're assuming that what's under construction is under construction, or what's been approved, like the Gateway Project and the Millennium, we're assuming those will come online. But by the time they actually get taxed, it'll be at the tail end of this district, because this district expires in 2021.
Other questions?
The taxes paid in 2021, correct? Not what we tax in 2021 to be paid in 2022.
Correct. The last year of collection is 2021.
Right, so it's based on collection, not on...
Okay. Correct.
Thank you. I think we'll move on to the public testimony portion of the hearing, and so I'm going to open that up for anyone that wishes to come forward. You'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. You'll get a green light, and when you have 30 seconds left, you'll get a yellow light. And you can speak either to the establishment of the new 66 West TIF district, that proposal, or the proposed modifications to the existing Southdale 2 district. Those are clearly linked together. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Shirley. I'm a member of Edina Community Lutheran Church, and I live at 2007 West 61st Street in Minneapolis. Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, I'd like to thank you very, very much for your support of 66 West. It's a lot of work to get this done, it's a lot of attention to detail, and I really, really do appreciate it. About five years ago, we at Edina Community hosted a homeless family for a week, and then they got up and moved on to another congregation, and when they left, someone asked, why is this family homeless? Indeed, why is anyone homeless? And we began to research homelessness. We met Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative, a housing developer in the Twin Cities. It's a collaborative of more than 70 congregations, ending homelessness and building affordable housing. We worked with many congregations, businesses, civic groups, city staff, the Planning Commission, the city council, legislators, to put this all together and secure all the approvals and financing for 66 West. This will be home to 39 young people who need an opportunity to transform their lives. There's widespread community support for 66 West, and I'm proud to work with all of you in the city of Edina to lead our state in providing this opportunity for homeless youth. We know that this will break the cycle of homelessness for many of these young people, and will serve our community well into the future. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Jackie Sullivan. I live at 7726 Lockmir Terrace in Edina. I'm a member of St. Stephen's Episcopal Church, and I represent our congregation on the Edina Community Lutheran Church's Housing Task Force. I just want to add my thanks to what Eric just said, because it's been now two years of work to get us to the point we are today. The city's commitment of $550,000 certainly had a positive impact on Beacon's ability to get the eight or nine other commitments to go together to create the capital needed to fund the project. With this financing in place, we're happy to tell you that we're ready to break With this financing in place, we're happy to tell you that we're ready to break ground in July, and we're moving ahead to be able to open 66 West in the spring of 2017. We certainly hope that you will join us in the celebration of the groundbreaking, and we will be sharing that date with you as soon as the plans are finalized. However, the funding of the investment from the City of Edina is essential to staying on this timeline and actually being able to start construction. So I urge you to vote yes on the resolution to create the 66 West Tax Increment Financing District and create 39 homes for young adults previously experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
My name is Lauren Morse Went. I serve on the staff of Edina Community Lutheran Church at 4113 West 54th Street in Edina. I've had the honor of working towards 66 West for the past five years, and if I've learned anything, it's the breadth and the depth of the support that this community has for serving its homeless youth and young adults. I could not be more proud that this city has rallied behind 66 West from the beginning, from educational gatherings, advocacy, or fundraisers. There's an overwhelming sense that it matters that we ensure that our young people have a safe and stable home, with the professional support to grow their education and their job and their life skills so that they can flourish for their entire lives. I have also learned how very complex it is to create this housing. So I thank you, City of Edina, for your bold statement on this complicated issue. Most who are not directly involved in it do not realize that there are zoning codes to evaluate, financing guidelines to be met, transit conversations to settle, and construction policies to unearth, and mountains, and mountains of paperwork. And for those reasons, I am forever grateful to the City of Edina for making the confident statement that despite these challenges, you are steadfast in your belief that housing matters. I am even more grateful for your substantial financial commitment through the creation of this TIF district, which will allow us to break ground this summer. Thank you to mayor and council members for your thoughtful leadership in the creation of this district and for all of your work on this project. As we move towards this groundbreaking with hope, we also commit to continuing our work and continuing to grow that groundswell of support for this project, and including ensuring the financial sustainability of the life services that will make it possible for the future residents of 66 West to flourish. We are advocating to our state legislature for an increase in the Homeless Youth Act, and we are working to secure investment from Hennepin County so that we can change lives through these essential services. And so we offer an open invitation for you to join us for an event called Acting on Faith: Investing in Potential, a gathering of hundreds of people of faith on Thursday, May 12, at 7:00 PM at St. Mary's University, in which we will call Hennepin County to increase their support for service funding for homeless youth and to highlight the groundswell of community support for the youth of 66 West. Thank you for your commitment, your expertise, your time, and for the creation of this TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Went.
My name is Frank Lorenz. I live at 7252 York Avenue South in Edina. I have no objection to creating affordable housing, but I have some concerns about the people that are going to be living there. And obviously, that's going to change. Hopefully, if this project allows these young people to get their lives back on track, in a year or two, they'll be able to have stable jobs and be able to move elsewhere, so there'll be a continual turnover. I don't have any problems with the 501(c)(3) charity that owns the property and is going to manage the property. They're running two similar, as I understand it, two similar organizations, facilities in East St. Paul, but what constitutes a success in East St. Paul is not the same as a success in Edina. Many of these young people come from horrible family situations. Their parents literally discarded them. Their parents are in and out of jail, on drugs, on alcohol, all of the above. But some of these young people have flushed their own lives down the toilet, and they are on alcohol and drugs and stealing and doing other things. And some of those people will be amongst the 39 that come in here. My concern is whether the charity has the backbone to evict people that start to get into trouble, because it's a short two blocks to the Edina Liquor Store, it's a short two blocks to the billiard and gaming hall on the third story of the Southdale Mall, and on their way in and out, they can shoplift if it so pleases them. So looking at the police chief over here, I'm not sure he has the staff to play nursemaid to 39 young people. Hopefully, all of them will have their lives straightened around, but I would like to see the city put some strict rules on this charity so that if one of their 39 charges starts to go back downhill, we don't have to wait for an armed robbery before that person is evicted or put in jail or both. My final question, which I don't expect an answer to, but if this is a 501(c)(3), are they exempted from paying property taxes, or are they paying a comparable amount of fee in lieu of taxes for services? Because if they're exempted from property taxes, you aren't going to get any TIF increment from this particular property. Now, maybe I just don't understand it, but 501, you know, normally charities are tax-exempt as far as income goes, but are they going to pay property taxes to the city, the school district, and all the other people, the county, the state, whatever? So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Ms. Lawrence. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ann Maverty, and I am the Director of New Projects with Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative, and we are so delighted to be here today and really grateful for the city's support to date of this project of 66 West. Joining me with, there's many members from the faith community that have helped make this project a reality, and I think that, like many collaboratives, you are an essential part of making this project happen as well. I wanted to just address a couple of comments that a speaker made. One of the things, Beacon is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, but as our projects, as you know, we own and operate almost 500 units of housing around the Twin Cities currently. This project itself will be a tax-paying project, and I think in the tune, and Nick can probably correct the numbers on this, of about $30,000 a year, so it will be contributing to this community as well as part of this. I also wanted to just note, and sort of our gratefulness to the city, that as some of our speakers have noted, we've been working on this project for many, many years. And it was at the point that the city made its commitment last year of about half a million dollars through this TIF district, that really signaled to the other funders that this was a community-supported project, and that was the critical element that allowed the other funders from the state, from the county, from Met Council and others to invest in this project, so that, you know, while it's half a million for the city, which is significant, it has leveraged over $11 million. And so for that, we're very grateful. So we're here to answer any questions. I'm here with my team, our Associate Director of Housing, Chris Detling, as well as, again, many of our volunteers who have helped make this happen.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Maverty. Anyone else wish to testify? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion. Those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay, carried. I want to ask Ms. Maverty to come back up for a moment and address the other question that Mr. Lorenz had, and that was-
Yes, sir.
The screening. I would call it the screening mechanism that you use on the young folks coming in.
Absolutely. Again, as I mentioned, that we do operate other youth housing, as well as nearly 500 units of housing around the Twin Cities. And we do provide screening for various criminal backgrounds, for income, things like that. Now, our mission is to screen folks in that are ready and motivated to work with us. One of the key elements of 66 West is that we have a service partner. Simpson Housing Services will be on-site at the building, providing services and support to the youth that are living there. One of the things that we have found in our other housing is this actually provides eyes on the street to make the community even safer than it was, because we have a 24/7 presence on-site at the property. So in terms of both screening as well as the management of the property, we stand by our reputation, and we certainly encourage folks to come visit our other properties to see for themselves.
Good. Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Maverty? Member Stewart.
A follow-up on Mr. Lorenz's other question. That $30,000 per year property tax, is that the full normal tax that a commercial residential property would pay, or is it a discounted amount?
It's discounted. It's almost, but I think I'll defer to our number, your city's consultant on the numbers here.
Mr. Anhut, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. We are financial advisors to the City of Edina and here to discuss the matter before you this evening. Councilmember Stewart's question, yes, this property will pay the full amount of taxes that a comparable site would pay, to answer it directly. It will be classified as an affordable rental property, and it does carry a lower tax capacity than a market value property, if you will, but they will pay 100% of the property taxes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members or comments from council members regarding this matter, or even a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-40 with subsequent discussion would be in order. Member Swenson.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2016-40. Discussion.
It's something that we've been working on for a long time. I don't think that support is wavered, so I don't see any reason that we wouldn't move ahead at this time. Nothing's changed, and it's a great project, and we're thrilled that you're coming to our city.
Other comments? Member Brindle and then Member Stewart.
I want to thank everyone who has spent their time this evening and during other meetings to come and be part of this process. Making decisions here is a result of our own individual work to understand what we're doing, to understand what TIF is, to understand how it affects an individual taxpayer, as well as all the other taxpayers in the city and what it means. And so I do appreciate the engagement that everyone in this room continues to have, and those who are, who watch this, to find out what's happening and try and interpret what the information that we are using to come to the conclusions we come to. It is complex, and I hope that in our discussions, we've been able to kind of enlighten to a degree some of those complexities into why this is important. It is a huge step. It's a big step for Edina, and there are, since the first vote on this, I've received one call that said, I can't believe you're going to allow that in Edina. And all the other calls have been like those from you who are here, and that is calls of support. So I was able to engage this person in a conversation about what is coming to Edina and why what they're afraid of isn't 66 West, and help her understand that. So thank you.
Member Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am going to support this proposal, and I want to talk a little bit so that everybody understands, this is not a perfect project. And so I do, I want to talk about the warts and the, but I think this, in some ways, is a little bit of the classic balancing of interests that governmental entities have to do. And so we are, I think, the pros outweigh the cons in this equation for me. And of course, providing those 39 residences, the, it's, you know, doesn't solve the whole problem, but we do chip away at the problem of homelessness, and I think that's very important, and so just very happy that this is taking place. Let me talk about a few of the negatives on this and just understand why I have taken those into account but still support the project. First, I don't like microzoning. We have done, we, as a council, over time here, have created a microzone for this particular parcel. I don't think that's a good path. I believe it is not precedent-setting, and I want to emphasize that I believe we are not, in fact, adopting any precedents by creating this one exception to, I think, a broader policy of not creating microzones. I think the, related to that is the chipping out this segment from the designated healthcare district that we created, and we'd created it long ago for good reasons. Not keen on doing that, but we're going to do it. Next, just in terms of the expense per unit of the overall project, I think it's a pretty high cost. Now, for the city's contribution and for the number of affordable housing units we as a city get, I think it's a real bargain, but for the overall project, where I, a business person, looking at it, I'd be concerned about that. And then, sort of understanding what kind of improvement we get as a city from the TIF district, I suspect it's not going to be as dramatic as some of those other results that Mr. Nundorf has shown us, so we're concerned about that. But on the positive side, we are, as I say, addressing the problem of homelessness, and I think we're doing our part to push that forward and hope in the future we can do even more. We recognize that, and I think an eight-year TIF district is, to me, that my gut says that that's sort of an appropriate timeframe for the TIF district as well. As Ms. Maverty pointed out, I think the community support for this project is important, and so I think it's important that we continue to provide that support. There are, in fact, no surprises here. This is one more step down a path that we've already headed down this path. I think, in fact, if we were to suddenly change direction here, I think it actually would be a demonstration of bad faith on the part of the city, so I don't have any interest in doing that. One footnote, I will say, and this is sort of directed at staff, we had a clerical error where we didn't get something filed on time. These things happen. Many of you are probably familiar with a business concept called continuous improvement. In a continuous improvement problem, process, for which should apply to any process in the business, you can make a mistake once, but then you address why and how that mistake was made, and you ensure, because you have baked into your new process, that we will not have these kind of errors in the future. So my expectation is that the city will learn from that clerical error and that it will not be repeated. If it is, we'll have a longer discussion. But I think it can be remedied, it is being remedied, and I don't want to dwell on that. So, again, very proud to support this, very pleased that 66 West is coming to our community. And as I say, I think the pros do outweigh the cons, and I think it's- and as I say, I think the pros do outweigh the cons, and I think it's important to take it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd start by echoing the comments of my colleagues with respect to the 66 West project, and Beacon, and all the members of our community who've worked so hard to make this possible. I'm just so impressed with the work and the commitment, and I'm looking forward to it being a success precisely because of the people who have put so much energy into it, and don't appear to be stopping anytime soon. So, thank you for that, and I think it's a real positive development for our community. So, I've been supportive of it since the time I was on the planning commission, and last summer, and will continue to be supportive of it, and will vote in favor of this motion tonight. But I would like to make a couple of comments about the tax increment financing district, and the creation of it in particular, because there's a lot of folks who maybe hear a lot about tax increment financing, wonder what it is, feel like it may be some mysterious, and therefore problematic, device that we're using. And I, to the contrary, think that this is a really creative and innovative use of government to help make a good thing happen. We have a track record in this community of both prudent and effective use of tax increment financing, going back a long ways. Certainly, the Centennial Lakes Project continues to provide resources that we can use to improve the community, and we've had lots of instances where we have used it in an effective way. One of the charts that Mr. Newendorf put up tonight showed the relative portion of our tax capacity that is in TIF districts at the moment, which is, I think, 1.6%, and the bar graph, I thought, was really helpful in illustrating that, because if you looked off to the left, it was many, many, many times higher than what ours is. So, we have a really responsible and prudent level and magnitude of use of tax increment financing. Now, some people say that is because we have so much estimated market value. And in fact, prior to this item, the city manager mentioned that just in the past year, our estimated market value has increased, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott on this, by $272 million in the past year. So, I think that that is an illustration of good fiscal management, good economic development, and the fact that we have a larger tax base to spread it over, I think, just reinforces the point that we're doing it the right way. In terms of this investment, Councilmember Stewart mentioned that it was a good investment for us. We, in our comprehensive plan, have committed to adding affordable housing units in our community, and we get to add 39 housing units of affordable housing for an investment of $14,000 per unit, which is a pretty gosh darn good deal. Moreover, it's in effect because of the use of our tax increment financing alone, rather than a grant. Makes no difference to Beacon, they will get the money, but by using tax increment financing, we will be able to replenish that Southdale II TIF district with the $500,000 over the course of the 25-year period. The other things that I would note about our use of tax increment financing is some of the numbers from Mr. Newendorf's presentation about, I thought it was particularly striking the difference in the estimated market value of both the mall itself, as well as the properties within the tax increment financing district for Southdale TIF, Southdale II TIF district. I think the numbers were that there was a 26% increase in value in all the properties around. And while Mr. Newendorf appropriately stated that you can't prove causation directly, there certainly is an increase by improving in the core to increase those properties around it. And finally, I would say, you know, one of the objections to tax increment financing is that we are, by creating a tax increment financing district, we are asking our partners at the county, and in the school districts, whether it be the Richfield School District in this case, or the Edina School District in other cases, to partner with us in this economic development enterprise. And I would say that all of those entities have just as much of an interest as the city of Edina does in making a project like this happen. And so, I think TIF is particularly appropriate in this case to help leverage the resources we have in this community to make this good project happen. So, I will vote in support. Thank you.
Yeah, I, thank you. I almost forgot that I wanted to be sure to make a distinction between the creation of a TIF district tonight, and what we did at our last meeting, which created a TIF district. And in part, again, there are no surprises here. This is something on the 66 West project that is the next logical step in a number of steps we have taken down this path. At our last meeting, three weeks ago, we approved a TIF district up at Grandview, and what we really did that night was preserve for ourselves a tool which we may or may not use in the future. And I would contrast this with what we're doing tonight. Tonight, we're creating a TIF district, which I believe we fully intend to utilize in the very near-term future. So, this is a necessary step in going forward, but it is, even though it's very similar in the words we're using to what we did three weeks ago, I think it's quite different in terms of the intent. We're actually taking this forward, we're going to employ this TIF district.
There are a lot of reasons why this is a success, and we're on the verge of having this groundbreaking in July, as Ms. Sullivan pointed out, Ms. Wynn pointed out. One of the major reasons is the people in the faith community in our town that got behind this project and said, "We need this for our kids. We need this for people to give them a chance. Everybody ought to have a place they can call home, and it ought to be a safe place that they can go to and learn how to flourish in our world." Another big reason for the success here, the potential success, the actual success, I guess, is I think the preceance that the city council had, when they decided to swallow a bit hard and give Southdale, give Simon, a $5 million loan, tax-free, to help maximize the remodel of the mall. Because no one around Southdale that owned property was going to do anything until they saw what direction Southdale was heading. Was it heading up or heading down? And because it's a 500-pound gorilla out there, when they invested 30 or 40 million dollars into this property they call transformational, and we gave them the extra money to maximize the remodel, you could see the numbers from Mr. Newendorf as to how the value of the property has started to increase again. Where the council was smart was putting a TIF district, having Southdale Mall be the hole in the donut, and then creating a TIF district around Southdale, thinking that Southdale remodeled would be having a catalytic effect on the neighborhood. And we didn't have to wait long to see that, with one Southdale place, the Wick's Furniture project that's under construction now, Aurora on France, and there's just a proliferation of land use activity going on out there. As Member Stewart said, the activity around 66th and Xerxes slash York, we've got three of those four corners now with something going on in terms of potential activity. All of that is going to allow us to create a fund, an affordable housing fund, because that's what we said we wanted to use this money for, that is going to be as substantial in size as what the city of Minneapolis has, if you can imagine that. I was at a meeting with the HUD secretary, and the mayor of Minneapolis told him proudly that they had $10 million in their affordable housing account. And we're going to have almost that much. Our little town of 50,000 people, right next to our big brother to the northwest, or northeast. So, I'm proud of our community, I'm proud of all of you for advancing this notion forward, and getting us going, not only on Beacon, but also on creating an affordable housing policy, and now having the resources to be able to do some things that we think we've always thought were really important to do, but couldn't figure out how to do it from an affordability standpoint. And here we are, with a lot of resources to be able to help us do the things that we want to do, and all of you want us to do, in our community, to make it a better place for everybody to live. So, thank you very much, I intend to support this as well. Roll call, is this a roll call? Voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the designated Resolution 2016-42, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay, carried. We're going to go next to, as you recall, we're going to be a little bit out of order on the agenda as we move into reports and recommendations. We're going to take D and E first, and Mr. Newendorf, I think, has Resolution 2016-42, which is a proposed modification, excuse me, of the Southdale II Tax Increment Financing Plan. Mr. Newendorf?
Yes, that's correct, thank you. So, the resolution, at this point, is 2016-42. You've seen the presentation, your last action created the new 66 West district. This action modifies the existing Southdale II. So, it removes one parcel, so that we could just create the 66, makes a couple other technical changes to it, does not change the budget, does not change the term, shrinks it rather than grows it. Happy to answer any questions myself or my colleagues.
Questions for Mr. Newendorf, or any of our resources? All right.
So moved.
No questions. All right, we've got a motion, we have a second. We've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2016-42, which modifies the Southdale II Tax Increment Financing Plan. Any further discussion? Member Stoughton? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, carried. Next matter is the E, 66 West Redevelopment Agreement with Beacon Interface Housing Collaborative. Mr. Newendorf?
Yes, thank you. I have a very brief presentation on this one, again, related to the last presentation you just heard. But this item actually executes the redevelopment agreement. So, at this point, we have the tool, we have the will. In your packet, you have about a 50-page contract or so, that our special counsel at Dorsey and Whitney has helped prepare. We've been negotiating with the Beacon developers and their legal staff for several months, putting this in place. From a typical TIF agreement, this one's pretty easy. We both agree on the goal, we both agree on the term, and we both agree on the amount, 550,000. So typically, in creating a TIF redevelopment agreement, the big issue is the but-for. But for this money, this TIF money is, will the project go forward? For an affordable housing project, that's a very easy answer, looking at all the different funding sources that have been put together. And so, I'm going to invite Mr. Lindgren to join us, and walk through just a couple of the key points in this agreement, and then after he presents, we're, of course, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Was Ms. Mavety going to offer any presentation here? Okay, her name's on the agenda here, that's why I'm wondering. Mr. Lindgren, welcome.
Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Jay Lindgren with Dorsey.
Talk about a guy we've got a lot of confidence in.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, I'm done. Again, special counsel to the city on redevelopment issues, and I just want to talk for just a few minutes about this 50-page document, because while this is a very complicated financing, as we've already talked about, this is really a fairly simple transaction when we get to the point of how does the money that you've been talking about transfer. Just want to talk about, first of all, the responsibilities of the developer. Under this transaction, the project, Beacon, is responsible for paying the costs of this TIF creation, and the creation of this document. It's an eligible cost under the tax increment, but out of that, again, as you already have talked about, they have a contractual obligation to deliver the 39 units of affordable housing, to do it no later than December 31st of 2017, and also through the transaction as a whole, to retain that affordability for a period of 30 years. In exchange, the city agrees to do just what you're doing tonight, to create the tax increment financing tool, and then to make two payments. Two payments that total 550,000. First payment of $275,000 at the closing, which is talked about in the June-July timeframe. The contract says that it has to happen by September of 2016. The second half of that payment is at the full enclosure of the building shell, which is expected toward the latter part, November or so, of 2016. Now, typically, and I just want to talk in a moment a little bit about risk, because I think it's a low-risk proposition, but we should put that on the table. You might wait till the end of the project to substantial completion, to give that final 275. It's our recommendation that it's reasonable in this situation, where you have all this amalgamation of sources, to not just create an additional financing burden of having construction financing until that final construction, you know, by the end of 2017. I'll mention one other thing that is in the slide, just because you might notice it, there also is an obligation that you will pass through a Metropolitan Council grant that would come to the city. If someone read the contract, it looks like an additional loan, but it really isn't, it's just the way the funding works from the Met Council. The grant flows to you, and then from you to the developer, but it doesn't create any additional obligations. And so, with that, do you mind flipping to the next? There, you've got it up there, just to talk a little bit about the risk. There is the situation that when this closing occurs this summer, for some reason, this project didn't complete, you've spent $275,000, and it's gone. You know, there isn't a way to really get that back. Now, I think personally that that risk is mitigated quite well, because you're putting in 275,000 at the same time that the eight or nine other funding sources are putting in, you know, approximately $11 million. And so, everybody is confident that it's fully funded. And your obligation to put that 75 in is contingent upon all that funding being in place. So, given this unique situation, it's a little bit more of a risk profile than I might recommend, but I think it's totally reasonable for this kind of thing. And again, it's just good to be clear that there really aren't a lot of good remedies if this project didn't go forward. We have to admit that we are a 5% investor, if you will, and so, all the other investors have a much higher priority. Again, you're one of the smallest investors, typically, in advising a city. I take the cautious approach, you're using the public money, but in this situation, I think that's a risk that, again, is worth taking, because you have all these other investors at larger amounts ahead of you. So, with that, you know, I think on behalf of your staff and your advisors, we recommend this contract. We think it's ready to go and ready to be executed.
All right. Questions for Mr. Lindgren, or Mr. Newendorf? Member Brindle?
Thank you. I have a wording question, and it comes from the staff report. And there are some bullets in the staff report, and I just, I need a definition here. If we look at the staff report, there's a series of about seven bullets, and the third to the last is, "The developer commits to long-term affordability of the apartment units." And the next one says, "The developer agrees to keep property on tax rolls with likely reclassification as affordable housing." Now, the previous bullet commits, "The developer commits to long-term affordability of the apartment units." Then, the next bullet makes that classification of affordability as likely. So, why is one bullet strong and one bullet vague?
That is because I wrote this about a week or two ago, when we weren't certain of every specific detail. But I thought it was important to put this bullet item in here, because the same question that one of our residents asked earlier, I think is a really important question. How does a tax-exempt 501(c)(3) property pay taxes? Isn't it going to go off the tax rolls? Isn't it going to go off the tax rolls? And that was a conversation we had with Beacon when we first started these negotiations, that the way this deal will be structured for them keeps the property as a taxable parcel. But they also wanted to make it clear that the state law in Hennepin County allows a reclassification, so the tax rate, or perhaps a tax factor, is different between an affordable housing project and a luxury housing project. When I wrote this, I presumed they were going to go for that tax reclassification, but it was not 100% guaranteed. As Ms. Mavety testified earlier, that is their intention. When we had Ellers prepare the financial estimates, that was the assumption that was built into it.
Right, right. So, that's where my question came from, but I'm comfortable with your explanation then. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this matter? Otherwise, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
You already have a motion.
Oh, you have a motion?
We're in discussion.
Oh, yeah, we're in. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All right. All those in favor of adopting or approving the redevelopment agreement with Beacon Interface Housing Collaborative, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Carried. Thank you. All right, we're going to go back up. We're going to go back up to Item A. Chief.
If I could interrupt, excuse me. But Manager Neil, we have similar items scheduled for our HRA. Could we discuss that very briefly?
So, what we've done with these items, as council knows in the past, is we have a number of professionals and other interested parties here. If you're relatively certain you're going to take the same action at the HRA meeting tonight, we usually release them at this time. Does this?
Council members?
I have no further questions.
I'm happy with releasing them.
Go away. Go away.
All right.
They are bound to be. All right, Chief, the 50th and France Business Association has the annual art fair coming up, and they'd like to use some of our property, I believe. And you've got this matter.
Yes, they do. Good evening, Mayor and council members. The 50th and France Business Association has applied for a special permit for the use of city property at the Edina 500 parking lot to facilitate a beer garden during the 50th and France Art Fair event, which will be held June 3rd through June 5th, 2016. The proposed alcohol service will be Friday and Saturday night from 11:00 a.m. until 9:30 p.m., and then again on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. As the art fair closes at 7:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday evening, the association is also requesting to have the ability to temporarily enlarge the fenced boundary between 7:00 at night and 10:15 at night to encompass the stage area to allow for increased capacity, a greater visitor experience, and some live entertainment. Alcohol service will be provided by the Edina Grill via their state alcohol catering license. The 50th and France Business Association has met all of the requirements set forth by the city, including hiring an off-duty police officer for security. I don't anticipate any increase in calls during this event for this use of the land. So, staff recommends that they approve the special permit for the city property, and I can stand for any questions.
Questions for the chief? Member Swenson.
They were there last year using it this way, correct?
Last year, they were there. They had the small area that's in your diagram as the beer garden. They didn't request to enlarge the area during the evening hour to allow for expanded area for the live entertainment. So, this year, I can show the picture and explain it a little better if you like. This year, they just want to enlarge it so it will encompass the stage area also.
And because you had no issues last year, you are comfortable, obviously, with it this year since you're up here and supporting it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions for the chief? Entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special permit to use the city property. We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of issuing the special permit to use city property at 50th and France by the 50th and France Business Association during the art fair from June 3rd through the 5th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay. Carried. Thank you, chief. Now, we're going to move into sketch plan review. Thank all of you for your patience. And the first matter in front of us this evening is, is Chris Acker here?
I am. Thank you.
Sketch plan review for 3901 Seventieth Street West. Ms. Acker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the agenda item before you is a sketch plan for the property located at 3901 France Avenue. It is the BP gas station site in the southwest corner of France and West Seventieth Street. The proposal is to tear down the gas station, remove all the hard surface that encompasses nearly all of the lot area currently, and replace it with a one-story, 8,000-square-foot limited retail building with surface parking along the south and west sides of the building. The remaining lot area will be landscaped. The sketch plan proposal is similar to the Phoenix Plaza directly north of the subject site across West Seventieth Street by design, and it will have a similar street presence with matching building materials, however, with a different building design. The property is currently zoned PCD4, which allows only automotive uses, which would be a gas station, car wash, auto repair business. So, the property must be rezoned to allow any other non-automotive use. So, there has to be a rezoning for the property. The applicants are suggesting a POD zone similar to the Sinclair Gas Station property that was rezoned POD to the north, again, also known as Phoenix Plaza, that houses the Ameritrade and Vitamin Shop. Tonight's applicant is the same applicant that developed Phoenix Plaza across the street. The property is guided OR Office Residential, which allows for limited retail. Because of the land use designation and the comp plan, uses allowed in the PCD1 district would seem the most appropriate as the PCD1 is the least intensive commercial zoning district. This is the same restriction that was put on the Phoenix Plaza. The proposed plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan in the area. The project requires a rezoning to POD. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dean DeVolus with DJR Architects to present their project.
Thank you, Ms. Acker.
Good evening, thank you. Also with us today is Hector and Marlon, part of the original development team that did Phoenix Plaza, and Sheldon Berg from DJR. So, I'm just going to do a quick walkthrough of the project. Thank you. I don't know if it's up yet. It's not up yet, sorry. And just give a quick explanation of our intent and design, and I'll look for your feedback. So, just loan our presentation up now to go through. Thanks, Sheldon. So, this, I'm going to do a few reviews of the previous projects we worked on, just to get a little bit of context. This is how Phoenix Plaza addressed the street in terms of its landscape position with the parking behind and the building in front. So, that's how this was put together, and that's how we're treating the other corner. And that's sort of the basic concept there. And again, this is how the building looked in terms of how it was put together in its process. The Bank of America, which you're familiar with, we're basically looking at the same idea of making a major address of the street, placing a building on the corner, and again, having the parking at the other building, and then making a major statement on the street and making that connection. Again, the idea of taking the major corners on France Avenue, the 66th corner, the 270th, and start addressing it as street retail, to start making the emphasis, of starting to create a pedestrian street sort of bit by bit as we do these various buildings along the avenue. I'll go to the building first before I go through the site plan. This is a rendering of the new building right here. So, this would be the opposite corner with the same idea of a major glass entry component that identifies a corner using a similar stone as Phoenix Plaza, but a different shape. So, they're companions as opposed to exact made. So, they have a similarity in architecture, a similar look and nature to it, and then using little walls to sort of define the street edges and create an edge to it. And then, site plan-wise, it'd be a two-tendant building, again, with a major piece of the corner in connection. Now, one thing I want to show, the planning commission mentioned as a request, and I'll show this with these two plans. If you see this setback we have here, five foot or seven foot, they suggested that we take this whole site and put the lot zero at this point and increase a boulevard along France. So, if you look at this one, and then the other one, this area's been increased by the same distance as you saw back here. And we probably make this boulevard along the street wider to make it a companion, but I just want to show you that difference. So, essentially, what they suggested is a zero setback on the western part of the property from the parking lot. And as you see, this versus this. So, that's one suggestion I sort of want to put for council. It's a suggestion they made. I'm waiting for council to get their thoughts and input on that. And the reason why, wanting more green space in front of the building along France Avenue. The other component, this is just shows sort of the companion nature of the two buildings, this being the existing Phoenix Plaza, this being a new construction, the future phase, call it. That'd be in the corner. Again, the idea, it's a different building, a different architecture, but similar materials, similar major emphasis on the corner, glazing connection, again, the two-sided retail, addressing the street, and again, a similar stone. So, they have a look that's compatible, sort of create a gateway to neighborhood, but they're not exact matches. So, they have a companionship that works with them. And then, this is a series of just various views of the building, looking at France Avenue. This is a rear, for example. This is a direct straight-on from a corner of France and Seventieth. This is a side along Seventieth, additional side along France. And then, these are the two, what I call, rear elevations, but the point that faces the parking lot. So, that's a basic building and thoughts. So, quick elevation, so I put it open for questions, comments, and thoughts, and thank you very much.
Member Swenson.
When the planning commission asked for a wider boulevard area, I assumed that was the space between the sidewalk and the curb to give more green space.
Here.
Yes.
And it will be. That was, this is.
You assumed, okay, so where did you add that if you went back to that line?
So, let me show you this. See this distance here?
Yeah, no, I get that part.
And where I'm going to add it, it's not where I'm showing it, because this was a mistake. I just caught it. I want to put it here.
Okay. Just so we're clear on that, because I think that's actually what they were asking for.
That was an error in this drawing, and the boulevard here is what gets larger, not the front lawn in the building. So, yeah, my apologies. I realize that when I looked at it. So, what we're trading is this space for this space. So, that's one thing. But so, what they're saying, there's enough green space here. So, what we're going to end up doing is landscaping the public right-of-way to create the buffer. So, our landscape would be incorporated here in the public right-of-way in lieu of making more space here. So, that's sort of the major concept with it. And again, that's sort of the request of getting a boulevard along France.
Keep that picture up, because my other question is, so that the entrance off of France is a right-in, only no-out?
Correct.
And is it just exiting on the Seventieth, or can you enter on Seventieth and exit? Because it looks wider to me.
Yeah, this is a two-way.
Okay, you just have an arrow out, but it can be in and out, too. Okay, thank you.
So, this is two-way direction, one way in only.
Other questions? Comments from Mr. DeVolus? Member Stoughton?
So, on the site plan, Mr. DeVolus, I see that you've got, it looks to me like a doorway going onto the corner at Seventieth and France, and another doorway going straight on to the street at France.
Correct.
I would note with the other project, there is a sign on the door saying, "Go around back." What's the plan for this one? Are we going to actually have traffic going in and out of the front?
We hope. Here's the tricky thing about tenants and architecture. You build buildings to accommodate the future, and you put the doors and stuff as the street evolves. And you sort of know, but maybe you weren't on council at the time, the tenant.
I was on the planning commission.
The planning commission. The tenant was reticent of it, and council held firm to keep the two-sided retail and stick with it. So, you know, part of it will be emphasizing the tenant, emphasizing how it works. When you get tenants in there, sometimes it's difficult to control how they behave. But that's, you know, that's sort of the issue, unfortunately, with one. The TD Ameritrade, very happy with their setting a double entry, but the other tenant, old school.
All right, so you're.
Unfortunately, it is.
So, what you're saying is, once we make the street lively enough, they'll start to greet their tenants at the front door instead of the back door?
Correct, because the buildings are permanent, and that's what they're trying to establish. It's actually right on that.
Is that it?
Member Brindle.
All right. My initial reaction to this was, uh-oh, we're going to lose another gas station.
I remember that from before.
That leaves us with a precious five, three of them clustered around Jerry's. So, there really are only two other gas stations that serve our city, and this is one of the busiest areas of Edina. So, that was my first gut reaction to this. So, I'm curious, what makes this site available? I mean, are they wanting to sell?
It's, they're an independent station. You know, Hector considered putting a gas pump in the parking lot, but we thought that may not have been too appropriate, so we sort of passed that. But basically, what it is, they're an independent, standalone, family-run gas station, and multiple family members, and they've opted to leave the business and go into other endeavors and split the money up. So, it's just the nature of a family making a decision.
And therefore, the property becomes available naturally. Okay.
Exactly.
All right, fair enough. I was curious how that worked. So, looking at what kinds of shops, both halves are identified as retail.
Correct.
And you mentioned in the planning commission that these are types of dry goods.
Correct.
So, that means it's not food, it's not coffee, it's, you know, that kind of stuff?
Correct.
All right. All right. In looking at the principles in the Southdale Working, that the Southdale Working Group has put together, one that, they're all thought out so well, but one that I believe really does, it resonates with me, is how buildings interact with one another. So, when a new building comes in, how does it take advantage of the buildings around it? How does it embrace the assets that the buildings around it bring to the new building? How does it provide assets to the buildings around it? This building is, as you say, a partner to the Phoenix, but I'm not sure that it embraces room and board enough for me. When I drive France Avenue, which I did today with an eye toward, all right, what does room and board look like from this side? It does have room and board on the wall of the building. So, the landscaping on the south side of this, I would love it if the landscaping would be a low enough profile that room and board is visible on the south side, on the north side of their building. So, as you're traveling south on France and you're looking for room and board, right now, there's enough landscaping, and it comes out in front of their building. Who knows? It may be their landscaping. But it does come out in front of their building a bit so that you really don't see their building until you're in front of it. And so, and you don't see that it's room and board until you're in front of it. So, if it's possible, because you're creating space between this new building and room and board by virtue of the parking lot, that that landscaping would allow room and board to be seen. And I think that would be an advantage for them. And you don't have a lot of choice out at the sidewalk because they have some utility boxes. You've got it identified as a transformer, but you've got some very ugly boxes sitting there. So, I don't know if they're landscapable. I don't, I, do they serve room and board? Or do they serve the area?
They probably most likely serve the area, knowing what you're dealing with. And the idea, so we did, we incorporated little walls that, once we studied this, we may be able to partially screen them, sort of like the same trick with. may be able to partially screen them, sort of like the same trick with Bank of America.
Sure.
Where did those little knee walls that define the site. The same idea is going to be ploied here, and hopefully what we do with those walls is screen them best we can.
Okay.
To drop it, in addition to the landscape, to accomplish that goal. So that's sort of the purpose why you see these walls shown on this, to really help set that up, to at least knock them back. Moving them, you deal with Tenement County, and Excel, and everything else, and that stuff.
I don't expect you can move, yeah.
Screening, that's what we're going to try to do our best with. And that's why you see the walls as an element that's been pulling her to deal with that.
All right. Let's see here. One of the comments made at planning is a good one, and it's a reminder that this is an area of small parcels. And in that way, you're going to have a lot of diversity, you're going to have a lot of changes in, you know, quick movements from one to the other. So is this building taller than room and board?
Uh, no. The main part of room, it's close to the main body of room and board, I'm visualizing it, it's going to be within two or three feet of it.
Okay.
So if you have some similar.
So if it is, it might be, it might be the crown at the corner that.
That's a little higher.
That might be taller, and that, by the time you're looking for room and board, that's out of your way?
Correct.
Okay.
And partly, we want to give some variation to the profile of the building, so it wasn't just straight across.
Sure.
Because it is a small parcel, it needs a higher intensity of detail and change to it.
Sure. Okay, let's see. Yeah, the only other thing is, if this building were to, if the retail in this building were to sell something that is in concert with what is sold at room and board, that maybe people would come here, go to room and board, go to room and board, and come here. I don't know if that's the kind of dry good that this might be, if it's decorating, but if it, if it is, then maybe some synergy would be to have a door on that south side. I forgot, is there one?
So, so what you're thinking is, there's a door here.
Yep.
And one thing we did look at is to wrap this around and get a door facing this way, what we discussed in planning, so this may have a door that faces, a door right here in the corner, which is on the west side. South side, there's not a door here, but there's a door right here directly on France, right in this location. So you do have that connection that comes across.
I guess it's close enough, okay.
Yeah, and the idea is that you want to make use, you know, of the sidewalks, so you want to sort of keep that.
Okay.
As opposed to get all traffic going, you know, pedestrian traffic from lot to lot. You sort of want to get, future, get the action along the street, if possible.
Okay. I'm just kind of looking at the, the hope and dream that people will just stream from one to the other, because there's something here and there's something there I want to do as well. And this, and the shops here are more a drop-in shop-and-leave rather than a come-and-stay?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, any kind of dry goods retail tends to be a shop.
A shop-and-leave.
And leave. If there's food, it's come-and-stay. So this is more of that type of use. Correct. And the idea is that the more retail that we establish, you know, it's bit by bit, this is a very incremental process, so the more retail corner development piece is established, the more your pedestrian traffic will happen, you know. Phoenix Plaza was its own deal. It was alone on the street, then room and board, then Bank of America, then this. So as these pieces redevelop, your chance of pedestrian activity increases as the area fills in and changes over to this environment.
All right.
So it'll come, but it's going to come through change.
My last thing is, and I don't know that this is a good spot for it, but we need a bike shop somewhere. So in some place, maybe close to Gallagher Drive, where the bike trail will be. We do. But, but anyway, thank you. It's, the building is okay. We've got the Phoenix there, and it sets up the look, and I understand what you're doing here. I would just like it to not just be looking at Seventieth and France, but kind of, I, I think one of the, one of the planning commission members asked for more glass.
Correct.
Along France.
Yep.
And I think that, that would accomplish that.
No, we'll, we'll consider that. And for your bike shop, we have more, a couple more projects, there may be an opportunity.
Okay.
So I'm not out of projects along France Avenue yet.
Great. Thank you very much.
Member Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the questions that I have, and, and really, it's more direction for staff, I'd like them to work with you. I, I sort of think as a PUD is the last resort for zoning categorization. So I'd like staff to work with you to just determine whether or not that's the appropriate one, or whether it could fit into PCD one or something, so I'd ask to do that. The, is this, looking at the picture, is it just one story, or?
One story. This is a one-story.
Yeah, with generous ceiling heights and some, okay.
Correct.
And then I, I will comment that I think the suggestion made at the planning commission of providing a more generous boulevard by making that shift, I, I like that change. I think that's a good one.
And that's why I brought it for, so you know, that's why I gave you a feel, because if that's what you want, we will go to a zero outline.
Right.
On the west and increase the boulevard along France Avenue.
Right. And then I'm just curious, since this is a gas station, have there been borings done? Do we know that the soil does not need remediation, or is it something that's a contingency yet to be determined?
All gas stations need a bit of it, it just comes with the territory.
Right.
Unfortunately about petroleum, it's easiest type of solution to deal with, because it's an organic product, and it, it can be removed and dealt with, so.
But it, but the tanks will be removed.
That should prevent development, yeah.
And at that time, they'll be able to test and.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Stottan?
I don't know if you're, we're doing questions now and reflections later, or how do you want to? I don't really have any more questions, but I do have some observations to share.
Sure, I think you could do either, you know, so go ahead, you finish your questions. Go ahead and make your observations and I'll, I'll do the same.
Okay. So, so I like it, I like, I like, I like the way it relates to the building across the street. I do think it, I listened and watched the planning commission meeting, I know there was some division of opinion there, but I, I like the way it creates a gateway and a signal. You know, we talk a lot about transitions between areas, and I think one of the important things with Southdale as it evolves is to make sure we're creating appropriate transitions between the commercial area and the residential area, and I think this helps to signal to people that you're moving to a more residential area, or vice versa, that you're entering a commercial area. So I kind of like what you've, what you've done with that, and they're not identical, but they're, they echo each other. With, and so, and I appreciate your answer to my earlier question about how sometimes things have to evolve. If you think about it, the, the Bank of America building is up at, at, it's up at Sixty-Ninth, and then there's another bank building on the corner, and then another building before the Phoenix building. And then south of this is, is the room and board, and then the, is it the crematorium is the?
Yep, yep.
Cremation Society. So I have a little different perspective on that, and I, I think, I don't want you to follow room and board. I want room and board to follow you. And I think that what we're doing here is there's going to be a, an evolution of this west side of France, and we've worked on these principles that are trying to create what we're looking for there. And I like what you've done with this intersection at Seventieth, and I think it, it, I, I think the important part is to start sending a signal to these other properties along the west side of France about how they can address the street, and the kind of character that will happen there. So I'm, I'm pleased to have now three, actually, you've been involved in all three, good for you, along this west side of France, and, and to keep evolving and encouraging others to evolve in a similar fashion. And so I, I'm a, I'm a fan of what you're, of the direction you're going, I like, I like the design, I, I agree about the boulevard, I do think we should do it, everybody seems to agree about that. I don't want you to put a gas tank in the, in the back.
Okay, understood.
Although, although maybe some charging stations back there, you know, electric.
Good point there.
So we, we won't have any gas stations anymore, 25 years from now, we'll just have the charging stations, so. So on the whole, I think you're headed in the right direction, and I look forward to seeing the next iteration. The only thing I would echo Councilmember Stewart's point about, if we can get this done with minor variances, I'm okay with that, instead of doing a PUD. I think we should, that should be the first effort, if it can't work that way. If we can't get the project we want that way, then I'm open to the PUD, but if we can get, if we can get what we're looking for by doing that, I'm amenable to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Swenson, your comments, please.
Yeah, can you go back to your picture, the exterior of the building from the corner? By the way, where are the bike racks? Usually, Member Brindle covers that for me, but she missed it for the bike store.
So there will be, you can see, you can see them sort of incorporated here, so there will be bike racks as part of it.
Okay. And, you know, right now, you're showing two trees planted in the boulevard on Seventieth Street. Is that a wide enough boulevard for that?
We will, and let me go back to the site plan here. What we're going to do, when we move the building back, I'm going to take away from the front yard and make the boulevard equal to what's on Seventieth, which will allow ample trees to grow there.
Okay.
There'll be a wide no stop.
I think that gives a higher level of comfort for people on the sidewalk. I like your use of similar materials, but not an exact mirror image. I appreciate the fact that you did something different.
Thank you.
But you used materials that were compatible. I don't have anything else to say about this. I like the plan. Remember always that the picture you're showing me is the one I want you to build, and.
See, when did that happen?
So I'm going to just, you know.
Understood.
Draw that line tonight for you, so we won't have any, any confusion like last time.
Understood, yeah.
Not that you've been switching bait, but I just, you liked your original drawing, and I really liked it too, and I equally like this one.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, Member Stewart?
No, bless you, go forward.
Any other comments, Member Brindle?
All right. For me, it looks remarkably like a miniature version of City Hall.
We copy well. No, it's a good building. I mean, there's elements of the building. That's Edina's signature, so.
So, but I like the way it kind of opens up and welcomes people into that space, the corner, the way you've, where you fixed the corner, Sheldon, I don't know, I suppose you did most of the work on this, and he's standing up here talking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
The usual shtick. So nice work, both of you. I think when you pan back, there was a, there was a bit of a sense of fortress to it that you didn't have across the street at the Phoenix. So I would be just mindful of that issue too, of do you indeed need more glass and there are less, less stone? Just take a look at it.
Yeah.
I think you got the same issue you had at the Phoenix, and the same issue we have here at City Hall, really, and that is, you kind of got four front doors in a way, you got to be thinking about how every side of the building looks, and you've done a good job of that. I like the way you avoided a singular plane, you've moved things in and out, you've got those stone walls, I think that'll be beautiful. And Hector, you, you did a great job letting them run with that Phoenix across the street with the materials and the design, and that was to be commended. It's a wonderful building to have in our community, and this will be a wonderful companion piece to it. If you go to the site plan just quickly, I was wondering, Member Brindle made me think of it, if you're walking northbound on the sidewalk and you want to duck in the back door of the tenant number two space instead of using the front door, is there a little sidewalk down the side of the, of the building? Or is it, are you just walking in the driveway?
Your base is, there's a bit of a piece here, but I'm going to say, you're generally walking in the driveway on this.
Yeah, okay.
You know, that's the reason why the idea of two-sided retail is you hope they come in this way instead of forcing everyone in the back.
And, and your doors on the backside look small to me, but you, you know, you'll, you'll figure that out, because you've got some beautiful trellis work, whatever you want to call it, back there.
Yep.
So, yeah, all in all, I'd say it's, yeah, go back to the one you just had up.
This one?
That one. That's where I get the sense that there's too much stone, there's too much stone and not enough glass.
Yeah, and that's the problem with computer renderings, they come in harsh, and that's why we went back and did, to really demonstrate the glass and the glazing opening.
That gives you a wonderful sense of it.
Correct. Because the computer renderings don't have any.
Yep.
Life to them, so.
Okay, so, yeah, those are my comments. I, I think it'll be a wonderful addition to our community as you bring it forward. We have a process we have to go through, of course, but it's, I don't have any other comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your help.
It's not a shoebox. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Hector.
Is that an architectural term, Member Stewart?
And I see you found your sweater for wearing in Minnesota from Fort Lauderdale. Thank you. Thank you. See you. Next sketch plan and review involves some proposed residences on Lincoln Drive. And we've got another team coming forward, 5901 Lincoln Drive, and Ms. Hocker, you have this one as well?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we start this matter, I just want to recuse myself, I have a family member involved with the neigh, the neighboring property, and, and so I think I'm going to recuse myself on this issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stottan, Member Stottan.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, the agenda item before you is a sketch plan for the Lincoln residences to be located at the former United Health Group site at 5901 Lincoln Drive, and the current home of the Children's Business Campus. Children's has moved into the existing office building on the north side of the site, the north parking lot and parking ramp will remain, portion of the existing office building would be removed, and a four-story, 240 to 260-unit apartment building would be built in its place. The applicant has indicated a provision of 10% of the units to be affordable for the housing, affordable housing policy. A new access off of Lincoln Drive would be created for the children's, and another new access created for the apartments. So there'll be two new access points to the site, the existing access drive will be removed. The children's building would retain control and eventual ownership of the surface parking lot north and east of the building and the existing parking structure. So those parking areas would be part of the children's business campus. Parking would not be shared between the two, Parkland dedication would be $5,000 per unit, on a $5,000 per unit basis required for a lot division between the two properties, because there's an intention of separating the two parcels off. The property is currently zoned PID planned industrial district. To accommodate the request, a rezoning of the property is required. The applicant is suggesting an MDD-5 mixed development district rezoning. The proposed new building would comply with the MDD-5 or net standards, with the exception of the number of surface parking stalls, and that would be based on the eventual number of units. There would be an adequate number of enclosed spaces for the apartment site. The site is guided in the comprehensive plan for office, residential, or OR, which allows for both the uses existing and proposed on the site. The guide plan allows for a maximum density of 30 units per acre. The proposed plan would be 13 units per acre. The height limit is four stories, the apartments are proposed to be four stories. The project therefore requires rezoning to MDD-5 and a site plan with parking space variance. And with that, I will introduce the applicants with Opus to present their project, Mr. Matt Ronhorse, Mr. Dean Newans, Mr. Phil Catnau, and Mr. Jay Fornia.
Thank you. Mr. Ronhorse.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Phil Catnau, I apologize.
Oh, kid, you're Phil, all right.
Matt Ronhorse is actually, he's, he's home ill tonight, but he wishes he could be here.
So you are Phil Catneck?
Yes, sir.
Is that the way you pronounce your last name?
It's Catnau.
Catnau?
Nothing like it looks, they spelled it wrong.
Thank you.
So. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk tonight and share with you our vision of the Lincoln Drive residences at the existing children's business center. On the map today, or what you see on your screen right now, is the existing conditions. A slight clarification in that Children's is currently a tenant within the business center, and as the tenant, they have signed a lease and made a substantial investment to come to the Lincoln Drive residence location, formerly owned by, or occupied by, United Health Group. As part of their lease, as part of what Children's is currently occupying, is the existing office building that I am circling here, as well as the lower parking lot and the existing parking structure. What remains currently unoccupied at the site is approximately 90,000 square feet of 1960s-era office. It's two stories, so about a 45,000-square-foot floor plate. The view from Lincoln Drive with, again, north being to the left-hand side of the page, the eastern elevation view of the existing building, you see one story exposed on that side and on the west side facing the wetlands and the existing parking structure is two stories. So taking us to kind of an overall context, a site plan with some bearings being crosstown Highway 62 on the right-hand or south side of the page, 169, Highway 169 going north-south, which is immediately adjacent or west of the site, and Lincoln Drive with the Londonderry-Bren Road overpass being the access route. What you see on this plan is the proposed residence redevelopment overlaying what is existing as part of the occupancy for Children's Hospital. And we took the liberty also of highlighting the regional trail location that's planned by Nine Mile Creek and a small proposed connection to the regional trail that we're incorporating as part of the plan, really as an amenity for the associates at Children's Hospital. This then is a blow-up of the concept site plan where now we're able to see in a little bit more clarity the proposed redevelopment location of the multifamily unit on the lower right-hand side of the site, or this would be the southwest quadrant of the site, again with the existing parking structure and existing office building and the lower parking lot there for children's. As part of this redevelopment, there is the elimination of the 90,000-square-foot existing building, and by that, the demolition of that. And in turn, we would be adding, you know, additional parking that really is part of the original lease requirements that were afforded to children's when they did the original lease agreement with the current owner of the property. To be clear, Opus's current purchase agreement is part of this and that we would be moving forward to closing presuming that we're able to continue forward with our proposed redevelopment plans. One of the things that we heard loud and clear from our discussion with the planning commission two weeks ago was to talk a little bit more about the pedestrian connection. What we have here is an existing office, proposed multifamily, as well as an existing retail, so kind of a cluster of mix of uses, more of a horizontal mixed-use in lieu of a vertical mixed-use. As you can see in the red dashed line is the proposed pedestrian path for residents at the proposed redevelopment that can get out to Lincoln Drive and make the existing crossing in the upper-left-hand side of the page. You can see the existing conditions on the crosswalk as well as what it looks like from the street view that is currently signed with a pedestrian crossing. We'd like to point out that specific to this scenario, the primary entrance and exit point to the existing retail on Lincoln Drive is located what we believe to be on the prudent or the northern side of that crossing where predominant traffic moves will be coming in off of Lincoln Drive and back out onto Lincoln Drive and going northbound to access Londonderry and ultimately onto 169. Therefore, with a lot of that movement not being in direct conflict with where pedestrian crossings would take place, we do feel that while there is some traffic calming measures that may need to be necessary, at least the existing conditions are suitable for that crossing condition. As I mentioned earlier, we are adding a slight, kind of almost serpentine-type circulation path for associates at Children's Hospital for their use. Currently, if you were to go out there now, there's a fair amount of topography there where the elevation is relatively high and you have to walk down to Lincoln Drive. There is not a real physical hard connection with how you could get to the retail amenities located adjacent to that site. This would afford them that opportunity to do so. And then they'd have the common trail connection, both as residents and as associates at Children's to access the future proposed trail by Nine Mile Creek that's highlighted in green on this image. Finally, you know, I think sometimes it's just powerful to look at, you know, what are we ultimately looking to discuss and redevelop? These are some existing conditions of, this is showing the existing drive with the surface parking lot and the two-story structure that would be proposed for demolition to create or set the conditions for our multifamily product to start going. One of the things that I wanted to maybe just set the table on early, and this maybe ties back as well to what we discussed with the planning commission, is that, you know, I think the opening comment was, this is, I think, something that's a little bit different in that it's a project in West Edina. We do think that at this stage, while we're still in sketch plan, we find that getting a lot of the stakeholder feedback is very powerful. We like to point out that we've got a massing scheme, we've got architectural concepts. We certainly haven't brought it all the way to a refined level of final product selection, but if you start to get the feel and understanding and context of what the building is going to look like, how some of the massing sets up, as well as highlighting some of the amenities that, you know, would be that experience for eventual residents as they come to the site. Again, with having the planning commission and now eventual city council member comments back, our next step in the process would then now certainly be to sit down and talk with the neighborhood groups and set up a neighborhood meeting to start getting their feedback, but we felt it prudent at this stage to engage planning and city council to get your comments as we start to and continue to refine our plan in efforts to ultimately come in with a more formal supplemental. One quick clarification, sorry to jump back. I did want to take this opportunity, as we discussed earlier, we are providing a single story of parking below the entire structure that's going to provide effectively one enclosed stall per unit, and we're providing approximately .5 surface lots that is below the city amount, but we do have a proof-of-parking solution that we could get to compliance with the desired parking amount with the city. So one of the variances is the parking amount. The other one is, and this is a nuance, but we are going to be, it's currently one parcel. We would be subdividing this parcel, so you know, it's something we could work with staff on as we refine the language on the variance, but you know, when we set the interior lot line there, there may be some side yard setbacks that we'd have to study in a little bit more detail, submit to you that it's certainly not at this stage something we need to go forward with, but that's the only other nuance that I did want to be pretty open about as it relates to potential variance discussions, as it relates to our plan redevelopment. So with that, I would welcome any questions or comments from council.
Questions for your, Member Stewart?
Quick follow-up question. The parking stall variance, can you describe for us just how far under the code you are? And so we understand sort of the magnitude of the issue here?
Certainly. Councilmember Stewart, the current code requires, I think, .75 surface parking stalls per unit. For this, if we were to use the number of 250 units, 75% of that, so we're off by 25%, so a little bit late in the day.
And that's whether or not there are any indoor stalls?
It's a combination of one enclosed stall as well as .75 surface stalls. So we are meeting, in theory, we're meeting the enclosed stall. It would just be that we're off by .25 surface stalls from the required amount per code. Again, with a proof-of-parking solution that we could make it to code.
So what is the solution?
What's the solution?
If your proof-of-parking is called, what is your solution? Normally, I see some highlighted areas with little dash marks. Are those your solution areas?
Are you asking if we have to go to the .75? That would be, yes, then those would be converted into parking.
So Bob, if you look by that little holding pond on the right side, there's a small area and then where he's just indicating along there too.
As well as additional stalls here.
I'll respond. I don't have any questions unless, Mary, do you have any questions you'd like answered first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. We have a lot of buildings that have just been built. The majority of them have their parking inside, so the parking they provide on the outside is for guests usually. The way this is kind of sandwiched into that corner for me isn't really wonderful. I see some trees, but I really don't see play in green space for a lot of housing units, 200 and some that you're going to do. It doesn't have a very pretty feel to me. I know you're just showing me in concept how the building is, but the building looks like something that without balconies could be turned into a Class B office building. I'm sorry if that's offensive, but it just, you know, you haven't really shown me anything that makes me think that this... There's some nice housing to the south of this. And yes, it has a connection to the trail. Yes, it's across the street from a little existing retail. But there's nothing in it here that would make me want to live here other than maybe the trail connection. So it's not... There's just, that's it. I don't really have anything else.
All right. Member Brindle?
All right. Go back to my comments here. I'm looking for... I'm a design person, I just can't help it. So I'm looking for design elements that make this look less like a box. And at some of the corners, there's a crown at... If you go to your renditions, okay, here. The near corner looks like it has a crown on it, and then if we go to the left side of the page, there's a crown, but I don't see that happening on the other corners.
Good evening. Dean Newans, I head up the architecture group for Opus A&amp;E. 10350 Bren Road West, Minnetonka. Proud to be a Edina resident as well.
Thanks.
As Phil mentioned, what we really wanted to do is really not focus on the architecture yet. We're still data gathering with our stakeholders. We've started to show some moves, but if we'd like the opportunity is to data gather and find out what all the influences are on the site, and we'd like to speak about how the building orients, and then come back and really show your architecture.
Oh, okay.
You can see there's balconies, there's some angles, there's some things we started to study, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we weren't presumptuous in our solution until we finish this process.
Okay, fair enough.
We really took a sketch plan for what it said.
All right.
If I, could you jump to the site plan real quick? I did want to respond to why that building is oriented the way it was. And one of the things, we studied many solutions here, and one of the things we want to try to avoid is not doing what some call a wrap product, where you put a garage in the middle and put housing all around and create this massive box. The site works very well in our favor that it falls from west to east, and we're using that to our advantage to tuck our parking underneath our building, so the major square of the building is our one per parking for that, and then the tails stick outside the structured parking. As far as the way the building is oriented, it's influenced by solar. We want to make sure that we're getting good light and coming into the building, and it's really trying to be as responsive as possible to our neighbors. We exceed the setbacks on the south side, and we purposely canted the building on approximately 45 to minimize the impact to our south neighbors. So there's no wall that's parallel to the property line, and we believe that that's going to create a better experience. And as it relates to the proof-of-parking, you'll see a double row of trees at the south end of the property line. There's a beautiful grove of trees that have been there for 30 or 40 years. We purposely put our proof-of-parking there because we like not to be able, not have to move those trees. It's a great buffer for our neighbors to the south. We want to make sure that we honor that, and so those will be the last cars we put in if we have to. So we're parked underground at one per zoning. We're at .5 surface paved with a .25 proof-of-parking as needed. We believe the market at 1.5 is plenty with what we have going on here. So we look forward to showing you more architecture later. As opposed to the last sketch plan you had, you saw quite a bit of architecture. We hope to impress you the next time you see the project.
All right, fair enough. I think the people who will choose to live here are people who will be trail users. They will be people who work in the area, and they will be people who will be transit users. You may be aware the light rail is going to be on the other side of 169 from here. And it's really been my hope that we would see some new residential come in this area and be that residential person who lives here because of access to transit.
Totally agree.
So, looking at the amenities in this building for cyclists, what plans do you have to accommodate cyclists?
We have a full bike shop and storage workshop for the bikers, and all the amenities are expected in a product of this type we anticipate on putting in the project. We can explain that amenity package to you the next time we get together as well. The courtyard that we've created between there is really an inside-outside experience, and while it may seem a little busy right now, we think there's great outdoor spaces and great open space in this building as well.
Okay. You mentioned solar earlier, and I'm happy to hear that. It is something that I wondered about with how you have it positioned on the property. And you also have a considerable amount of flat roof. And so I'd like to hear, whether now or in the future, what your plans are for the roof.
As it relates to photovoltaics, I don't say that we have that in our program right now if that's where you're going with that, but it is a flat roof solution. There'll be some elements, as you've mentioned, the crown elements. There'll be places where the plane changes, the horizontal plane changes, but right now it's a flat roof condition.
Well, one of the, I'll just mention, one of the ideas, innovative ideas that's happening is that a building owner will lease the roof of the building to a solar developer who will then put a solar garden there.
We are oriented very well for that opportunity.
We really are.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's out there. I just see a lot of surface parking here. Is there a reason why there's so much surface parking?
Only because it's required by zoning.
Well, the surface parking is...
As it relates to the housing site, I'm sorry. Are you speaking of the balance of the project or the housing proper?
I mean, there's a lot of parking places around the apartment building. Is the apartment building going to be parked underneath primarily?
Correct. Every resident has a space, it's one per unit below grade, and it's .5 per unit at surface or above grade. So that's the .5. You're seeing 122 cars there approximately around the perimeter.
Wow.
It just, it adds up.
I guess. I'm hoping that there's one car per unit because they won't need more than...
Right. We'll fine-tune that. We're doing a market study, we're determining what the right count is. We're already asking for some break on the parking. We will make a recommendation we think that's both market-driven and appropriate for zoning.
Okay. Do we know, is there a bus along Lincoln Drive?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there?
Yes.
There is.
Okay. Where's the bus stop, do you know?
Right out, kind of to the current entrance. It's right before the current entrance and across from the current entrance. So my assumption is that somewhere the MTC will move, depending on if they're moving to the children's entrance or this.
We're actually, and this is why we came back after hearing planning commission to talk about how pedestrians interact with this environment. And you see that a lot with our diagrams, and certainly there's buses, there's people that are moving to work across the street. They may walk, they may bike, they may blade, I mean, there's many ways to do that. There's the trails that will work there. And there's an excellent trail system within the park itself that is separated from the vehicular traffic, that one-way system that's in that park as well. So we're really hoping that this, as Phil mentioned, this horizontal mixed-use environment that has dining across the street and coffee across the street and people working and people living, it really creates a little bit of a community.
All right, great. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Member Stewart?
Thank you. I would, I'd like to echo the comments of my fellow councilmembers. I'm glad you haven't really started on the architecture because this rendering is kind of a boring apartment building. So I hope you could give us some architectural interest. I invite you to do that. I want to talk a little bit about the parking issue that has been touched upon. I think, and it's related to the green space issue which Member Swenson talked about. I think if you were to go two floors deep on parking in the... think if you were to go two floors deep on parking and enable really all of your parking to be underground, then you could use some of that outdoor space for some green space, which is lacking here. And I think if you have some families with small children living here and that kind of thing, you just need more space right around it for people to exist. I think you've done a nice job. You do have a challenge if you're going to keep that building that Children's is in and keep the existing parking structure. Yeah, you've kind of got to fit it in the space that's there. Almost anything would be an improvement over what's currently there. Currently, and I go by it all the time, it's a sea of asphalt with faded parking spaces on them, right? And then you've got a not particularly attractive building at the far end of that sea of asphalt. So almost anything's an improvement, but I don't want to just have marginal improvement. I'd really love to see it get stepped up. So I invite you to think about that and the architecture. I think surrounding it with a little more green and a little more space for people to be and live and breathe. And if you can do that, if you could go two floors deep on the parking and put most of the parking underground, I think it would be a real service to your project. So, thank you.
Mary. Member Brindle.
Are there walk-ups around on the grade level, or do you enter from the inside of the building?
We've talked about... Sorry. We've talked about that as an opportunity. We haven't solved that yet, but right now, we have access from inside. We may have some walk-ups, but it's on the design table right now.
Okay. All right. Curious.
I mean, we like that activity at the street. Specifically, at the left edge of the rendering that you're looking at might be a good opportunity for that. And we're working on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I like that you've got confidence in the neighborhood where your corporate headquarters is located and that you want to put a... Propose an apartment building on the west side of Edana. I think it's a wonderful idea. Understand, relative to the architecture, we'll want to see something interesting. I think you've got a wonderful architectural reputation in-house, so I expect that we'll see something very interesting. And these renderings that were part of our packet that have some of the amenities that you've picked up from, you know, photos from other locations, I expect we'll see something that is consistent with what you're showing there, which I think were very interesting. Terms of height, density, those things I'm all comfortable with. Based on how much you're parking underground and what MDD-5 requires on the surface, I'd almost be tempted to give serious consideration to allowing you to park or allowing you more green space and have a larger proof of parking agreement, as opposed to going two stories underground at $35,000 a stall. And I don't know what the water table's like over there, but I mean, there's a big marsh right behind there. But that may be something for us to think about, too, is, you know, in addition to one unit per... One car per... One stall per unit, how much more do we really need? And if you've got the capacity to do it, maybe we should think about green space that way.
Every project that... Every project we do, it's always market versus zoning on the parking, and we'll study that carefully. We like the opportunity of creating great green space, and we're good listeners, and we'll make sure that we look at what happens outside the building, because we're creating an inside-outside environment. You know, we are 12-month people, even though we're... We have all kinds of climate. So we look for that opportunity.
I appreciate also the fact that you've made sure that you have a nice buffer for the people to the south, try to preserve those existing trees.
Right.
That grove, I think, would be important for your privacy and their privacy. So that's... I commend you for that. But all in all, I like the general notion of it. I think MDD-5 seems to be a good alignment. This whole parking issue, I think, will be a really interesting discussion when we get to that point, in terms of...
We'll continue to study that.
I think a common goal that all of us have here, when we look at it, we just see too much asphalt. I think, Member, Stewart said it well when I drive by there, too. I think, oh, man, that's rough. Member Swenson.
One other thing, right now, it looks like the sidewalk along the main road is right on the curb. So as you work your sidewalk to cross over to the retail space and things like that, I would like it to have some sort of boulevard.
We've heard that as well.
You know, cars travel fairly quickly along here. It's safer. I also noticed in the minutes, I think, from the planning commission, that there was some comment, anything you can do to add a walking circle around your facility. I know, you know, the bike path is right there, and you can actually probably walk over to Walnut Ridge Park, which is kind of on the other side of the... But, you know, just for someone to take a lap, I don't know if you're going to be allowing dogs. But I think it's really healthy for people to be encouraged to walk. And walking a parking lot, even if it's underparked, isn't really a wonderful conducive way to do it. So any circular path you could make around your facility, I think, would be healthy.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Good. That's it for me as well. So I hope you get some decent takeaways from the conversation.
Thanks for your time. This has all been very good feedback. Next to the neighbors and get their input as well.
All right. Thanks for...
Good idea.
Thanks, Mr. Catnall. Not cat-nack, as it's written here.
Yes. We call him Catnall. No worse.
That can have all kinds of interesting meanings, huh?
And I will venture to say, there's nothing about Children's there, so the next time they come before us, Member Stunt, I don't see any reason why you would need to recuse yourself.
Uh-uh.
Well, maybe he's come to that same conclusion after listening to the presentation. But we won't ask him. So the next thing we have in front of us is Resolution 2016-39, accepting donations on behalf of the city. Do we have a motion on that?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to adopt the resolution, accepting donations. Requires a four-fifths vote. Got a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Donations this time, this session are Edana Communications and Technology Services, Edana Community Foundation, $825 with a video production supplies, and then the Edana Park and Recreation Rec Arts Center, several cash contributions and some in-kind contributions. We thank all those folks. And then Amy Smart, thank you for the nice tree donation to the Edana Park and Rec. I signed a letter to Ms. Smart today. Really appreciate that as well. So those names will be posted on our website for people to see and appreciate those donors to our community. Correspondence and petitions. Anything other than what we had in the diocese this evening? All right.
Can I respond to one of the petitions, though? Or would you rather wait till council comments?
Is this on the sidewalk on Tower?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got that coming up, and I think we need to receive... That's an action item.
Ah, that's right. We have to receive it. Never mind.
So just in terms of the correspondence first, anything additional that we need to be mindful of, other than what Mr. Groats gave us? All right. And then with respect to the council's willingness to receive the petition for further analysis relative to the neighbors on Tower requesting a sidewalk on Tower Street, Member Swenson.
Mr. Miller, we decided on West Woodland Road that we would construct the road with the ability to put in a sidewalk later by shifting the curb. Is that something we can do on Tower, or are we too far into design to do that?
We're not putting a sidewalk on Woodland. We're putting it on West 56.
I know.
I'm sorry.
But we shifted West Woodland in our build so that we could potentially in the future.
Right.
So my question is, can we also do that on Tower?
We can. The project's already been awarded.
I know.
So it would be a potential change order, depending on... I mean, it would be bid items we already had, so it may or may not be a change order. We'd be more concerned with the actual time to design it.
I know.
And get it out in front of the neighborhoods, because now we're going to be impacting neighbors differently than we were before, having just curb balance on each side. Now we're shifting the road. There's going to be impacts, more impacts to driveways. It's going to be more expensive.
Well, it's now or 45 years from now.
Or we retrofit at a later date, like we've been doing, and that's not always...
We understand. We've been through retrofitting, and that was painful in December. I would rather avoid retrofitting, but I wish that this petition had come forward from them.
Sooner.
Sooner.
Six months to a year ago. And I remember when a young family asked me about a sidewalk two years ago, the first thing I said is, "Start your petition now." Well, unfortunately, that didn't happen. So what does the rest of the council feel on this?
Well, I think what the motion would be is that we accept the petition and then refer it to engineering as to feasibility.
Right.
So I think that would be an appropriate response to what the neighbors have requested us to do, is we send it now to the engineering department as to look at feasibility.
But I think concurrently with that, we should be finding out from the neighbors whether they're willing to be assessed for the cost of the sidewalk.
Uh-uh. We don't assess for sidewalks.
We don't assess when it's part of our plan. This is not part of our plan. This would be extra.
I'm not suggesting we put it in. I am suggesting that we create the opportunity to more easily... More easily, my mother would hate that grammar. Put it in later. So where we didn't do that on Southdale Road, and when we came back to do it, we'd very nicely put the road in right down the middle of the street. In this case, we would shift the road so that the side that looked the most feasible for having a sidewalk had more front yard easement to put it in.
Let me back up here. It seems to me that if they want a sidewalk, and they want a sidewalk now, we're putting one on 56. We already know that. But if they want a sidewalk on their street, and they're willing to be assessed for it, it would be cheapest to do it while we do their street. It would be cheapest to do it as part of the project. And so we could do them a service by doing it the most cost-effective way, which would be as part of the street project.
But we've already bid out the street projects. That would be a huge... Would that be even a bigger change order or not necessarily? But I'm not comfortable with assessing them, I'm afraid to say.
If we designed it for a sidewalk, to put the sidewalk in wouldn't be an issue. I mean, if we already set up the street, so we could take a look at our schedule, see what the opportunities are there for schedule and cost, and see what those impacts are by shifting it, try to balance it. Because we did some initial work when we looked at all three of those streets.
Yeah.
We got some input from the folks, and we can come back in two weeks and report kind of what we found, and then get the council's blessing one way or the other. Probably not a lot of... Enough time to get input from those folks, more than the petition we already received, because by the time we draft the...
Petition has a fair number of signatures of people on the street.
Sure.
From the number of houses on Tower.
So we could do that, come back with a report just on what we're seeing, and receive it tonight, and come back in two weeks with an update, and have a conversation with the contractor on potential impacts to his schedule and potential costs.
Okay.
Two weeks is enough time to determine feasibility?
Yes.
Okay. Member Swenson, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, no. I was just going to say, and where is everyone else on putting it in now and what the cost would be to those street owners?
Putting one in now.
If we chose to put it in now, instead of just make the room for it now, Member Stewart suggested that the people on that street would be then assessed for the sidewalk.
No. No. I would put the road in that would allow a sidewalk in the future.
I would only do it if they really want it. I mean, if they want it and they want to pay for it, I... Why should we not give it to them?
Manager Neil.
Our policy, our PACS fund policy doesn't anticipate this kind of thing, and it does provide for full funding of the sidewalk if that's... If the council awards a project, and that's the way you want to do it.
Yeah. That was my thought, was that we look at feasibility first, and then we look at funding. And if we have the ability to do it through the PACS fund, great. If we don't, then Member Stewart has an alternative suggestion, that is that...
Even if the PACS fund had more money, this would not be our next priority. So we would only do it if they want it so much they're willing to pay for it.
Well, I wouldn't agree with that, but I do think we should study feasibility first. I mean, I might come to that conclusion eventually, but I would like to just look at it from a feasibility standpoint, which will also include, I would assume, some projected cost.
Correct. We'll have costs, but there is a priority list of sidewalks. We got missing gaps in town that are higher priority than this one.
Right.
Just because this is going to have 3, 4 right in a four-block area. You know, it's similar to Arden Park, where they didn't want sidewalks on every block. This neighborhood wants it, and it's... When you got that many, it really doesn't rise to the top as a priority. This is going to impact the PACS funding if we decide to do it, and it's going to impact some of those that are higher on the list. So we can come back with kind of the trade-offs.
But Director Milner, the cheapest way to do it would be is when we redo the street, right?
This would be the cheapest time to do it. So we have some... We had some estimates already when we looked at those three streets, and I believe it was in the $80,000 to $90,000 for this sidewalk, but...
How many people on the street? Forty? Forty houses, maybe?
We'll come back with all those numbers.
Okay. That'd be great. Do you need a motion?
We do.
So moved.
No, a second.
Okay. We got a motion in a second to accept the petition for a sidewalk on Tower and refer it to engineering for feasibility. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. I'm just looking at... We didn't have that one in front of us. I was looking at some of the... Where the bids were coming in, some of the projects were coming in remarkably lower than what we estimated. I don't know. That's going to fall into this category or not, or if it did. Okay. Moving on. Aviation noise update.
We had a NAC meeting about a week and a half, two weeks ago. We do have a new head of them act. Jeff Hammel's replacement is Brian Rykes, R-Y-K-S. I ran into Lisa Palin, our representative at the NAC meeting, and she did suggest that Brian would be available to come out and speak to our city. I've also gotten an email from Connie Corino wanting to set up another aviation noise discussion in May. She would like some help, I'm sure, with some advertising for it. And she wanted to do it in a different neighborhood than the ones they've already done it in. I suggested that maybe this would be a good time to meet Brian, and we could do it here. I don't think that's really her idea, but I think that would be a great opportunity, and then that would get a lot of people in our community to be here, specifically to meet him, which I think could be healthy. There is a different... Let's see. Because there was the problem with runway 45 and 35L for landings and takeoffs and potential conflict, they had to put aside the long-term plan study for a while. That is now at least going to be six months out, because FAA has to evaluate how 30R is working, because they've got 30L working now. Now they've got to change their way they do 30R. So the long-term comp plan will be a while, but they do have contours that show that parts of Minneapolis that didn't get... Ever get mitigation before actually will get mitigation now. Some of them are in that area of like Dupont and 52nd, which is kind of interesting, because the noise is getting longer, is really what it is. It goes for a longer time away from the airport, which probably also then talks to us about what people are hearing farther away from the airport that felt they never heard noise before, because these plans, planes are turning, they're just not, there isn't enough average noise in twenty-four hours to make them part of that contour, which I thought was pretty interesting, because complaints are up eight percent, but the number of flights are up two percent, but the number of people on the flights are up considerably. So, I think that's about all I have on airport noise, is this, but the request from Connie is really to establish a month of May every year meeting to discuss airport noise.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it, it's, I don't know if you have enough new stuff to tell them. Member Brindle, you've talked about replacing me, so this commits you to that kind of...
Yeah, and, and I can kind of understand the timing, because this is the time of year, people may be opening their windows with the nicer weather, and so it may be more top of mind, but it just, I, I can understand what Connie's thinking. And, and giving the, giving the community an option to have a regularly scheduled conversation, if it eventually runs its course, it runs its course, but, but it, I, I have no problem with it. I, I think, I think it could be done nicely.
Scott, Jennifer, is that something that you wanna, yeah, we did this in the Morningside House.
Oh, at Weber Park?
Mr. Stewart, are you addressing for your comments? Okay, sorry. Is, is that something we want to do here because we would ever tape it, or not particularly?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't want you to have to ever go and tape it somewhere else. Do, do we need it to be taped, I guess is my question?
I think, if you think you need it to be taped in a quality that people could actually watch it and learn...
Well, certainly if we have Brian here, our new Mac chair...
I suggest doing it here.
I think it should be here.
Yeah.
And I don't know, do you want him here as part of a council meeting, to speak at the beginning of a council meeting? Or do you want him here at a separate meeting?
No, I think here, council meeting.
I, I think an introductory meeting with him, where he introduces himself to you and, and gets a chance to kind of be seen in front of the council's a good idea. Having him back then at some point for a more working meeting is probably a good idea.
I think it would be good not only to get to know him, but I think it would also be good to let him know directly the different concerns of our community, since we're a little different than the ones that are contiguous to the airport, and we don't have any noise monitoring. Okay, I'll work on something then separately with Connie, and then separately bringing Brian here for a council meeting with you and Lisa.
Thanks. Manager Neil, anything airport-related?
No.
Airplane noise-related? All right. Saving Member Stewart till last. Member Staunton, wanna build up the crescendo for the...
A couple of, just...
For the big event.
Couple of items I wanted to ask Scott if you have perhaps updates for us on the status of the community solar garden project.
Members Staunton, members of the council, we have received the engineering structures report from the engineering, the engineers that are performing the structural analysis on our maintenance facility, and they have come back and reported that the proposed community solar garden will be, will fit. Not only will it fit on top of our public ma, public works and engineering maintenance facility, but the facility is strong enough to hold that, that structure. So, the next stage in that process, that, that's very good news. That was, if there was gonna be something that tripped us up, that, that was probably gonna be it. Two additional things that has to happen though, but before this can go to construction, we need to get it, we need to get an affirmation from Xcel Energy that, that their, their infrastructure in the area can handle the power that's created by this solar garden. We're almost sure that that's gonna be the case. The other sign-off we need to get is from Firestone. They, they made the rubber that's used on top of that roof.
Right.
The, the warranty for that roof is very valuable to us, and we don't want to do anything that invalidates that warranty. We don't think that will be an issue, but they'll also probably have some best management practices that they'll want us to follow, you know, when, when putting photovoltaic arrays on top of rubber roofs. I'm sure they've had to deal with that in other places. In fact, our roof warranty has a provision in it that, that covers that, that eventuality. So, it is something that they've thought about, so we are following up on that as well. Once those two issues are resolved, the project can then get into the, the approval queue at Xcel, and, and they can approve it, and then the project can be under construction. When it is, and we expect that to happen sometime this summer, we will host the first city rooftop community solar garden in the state of Minnesota.
How about that? So, I, I understand that at the upcoming Energy and Environment Commission event on April fourteenth, the developer is gonna be there looking for subscribers, so that's an opportunity if folks want to follow up on that. I also wanted to mention that last night I attended the fifth workshop of the Partners in Energy group that I have been serving as liaison from the council too, and that group is making progress. There are a few loose ends to clean up on the plan that they're putting together, but the next stop is intended to be the Energy and Environment Commission for comment. I know that the folks from Xcel who collaborated with us on that and helped facilitate it, I think would like to do a debrief. I think City Manager Neil and I will probably meet with them at some point and, and just debrief a little bit. And then, once the Energy and Environment Commission makes some comments, I think it'll be back to us at the council to talk about the plan, and it's, it was a terrific effort by a lot of our residents who participated in that, and, and I'm optimistic about where it's going. The only other question I wanted to ask is, I know we've had some correspondence from folks who are concerned about upcoming highway projects. I really appreciated the great graphic that staff either put together or circulated or both, showing what was happening at Highway one hundred at the Fiftieth Vernon exit entrance. I think people found that really valuable. It was a quick snapshot way to learn when things were gonna be closed and when they weren't. But it also raises the question, we've gotten some correspondence from folks understandably concerned about Highway one sixty-nine's closure next year, and I know, Manager Neil, you were trying to put together some, someone to come visit us at a council session. Can you give us an update on the status of that?
I, I can, actually, I'm gonna ask Mr. Milner to give us that update. He's got the most current information.
Yeah, we made the request, and we're now coming on the next council meeting during press, special presentations to present the project again as a whole, what they're looking at, and some of those impacts that are raising many of the residents' concerns. So, John Griffiths is gonna be part of that, Andrew Latia, who's been here before, and maybe somebody else to represent the project and answer any questions you may have on the nineteenth, seventeenth, nineteenth, in two weeks.
Two weeks, terrific. Well, that's great. I think people, so folks, if folks are still watching, make sure to tune in on that night if you have questions, or, or ask us beforehand if there's things you're concerned about, email us, and we can ask questions, and make sure we find out as much as we can about how that's all gonna unfold. And then the final thing, just that I'll pass along is, I think it is Sunday that the Human Rights and Relations Commission is sponsoring their annual Days of Remembrance, which is gonna be here at City Hall, right?
At one o'clock.
At one, at one PM, so invite folks to come out and, and enjoy that, they always do a great job with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Swenson?
A quick airport date, by the way, the public comment period, that open session where you can actually go and talk to NAC members, is April twenty-seventh at seven PM at the St. Louis Park City Hall. Couple of things, we do have two bridges that are closing, both the bridge here up by Perkins and this bridge. Is one gonna be open while the other's closed, and then they're gonna flip, I assume? Because one said it was closing the fourteenth, this thirteenth? Oh, and one said, I thought a different date, do you know?
So, yeah, originally they had anticipated a ten-day closure for each one of those separately. The contractor's now said he can get the repairs done in two days. So, you'll see one close for two days. I'm sure that's weather-dependent if it's raining, and then, once the one's done, they'll open it up and then close the other. So, there's always gonna be one, either Eden or Fiftieth, open.
Okay, and then I think Benton ramp going north is closing, and that wasn't maybe on your list?
We can review that. We know there's some work on the southbound exit ramp to Benton. There's some improvements that we're working with them on and trying to get some of the residents...
So, maybe it was that and not going north that I saw?
There's some signage sitting northbound ready to be put in.
Yeah, there is, you're right, that's why I think northbound, yes, there are. So, but there's no sign that says what day. Okay, and then...
On that same topic, then, are the bridges being timed along with the inner ramps? Because inner ramps are gonna get done in a, this week, possibly? Member Director Milner?
Real similar schedule.
Before they close the bridges, are they gonna finish the inner ramps?
The inner ramps, the one was only a two-week, roughly a two-week closure. This northbound ramp on the fifty was closed till August, and no, that one inner ramp that had, both northbound ramps are gonna be till July or August, depending on which one, but the northbound up to Grange, that one's gonna be open, back open within a week or two. But the timing on that versus the bridges, I'll look on the website, see if I can find something.
Okay.
It's gonna be tricky.
Correct.
We got a note from Lori Wilson Spencer asking us if there's a possibility that our current contract for recycling could be looked at before 2019. What, isn't, I think it goes through 2019, but isn't there a look back year next year or something on it?
The short answer to that is yes. We're, we're pulling together the staff team from, from Community Health that, that manages that contract, and we're gonna take a look at it with you and, and maybe come back to you at the next meeting and report what we can do.
Okay, you know, her hope is that it could go weekly instead of every other week, so...
I've heard a lot of comments on that as well, so...
Yeah, and then...
I've asked the, some of the people in Energy and Environment contact or Sarah Zerrin, and there's another woman now in charge of recycling and garbage.
Then, I know Sarah Zerrin emailed at least two of us about plastic bags. Has Jordan, Jennifer ever thought of asking about banning plastic bags now that Minneapolis has done it? Did he ask that?
Yeah.
And I've just forgotten what people said?
Yeah.
Just trying to get some feedback before we wade into there.
And they're coming, goes a recommendation on food containers shortly, I guess.
Yes, the styrofoam containers, that would be great too. That's all I have, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you. Member Brindle?
I just have one thing, other than the correspondence we received, I think we've talked about the stuff that really needed answers. Always appreciate the correspondence we get. I attended the annual meeting for Community Action Partnership of suburban Hennepin on Thursday, March thirty-first. Member Stewart was there as well, thank you for coming. You get a firsthand look at the group and hear what they do. I will serve as board chair once again this year in 2016. This meeting was attended by Hennepin County Commissioner Jan Callison, who was a speaker, and also attended by the Minnesota Commissioner of Human Services, Emily Johnson Piper. So, that's a pretty high-profile person to come to the annual meeting of CAPSH. So, with all the changes happening at CAPSH, and the organization is handling the changes very well, it's nice to be recognized by the state.
Thank you. Now, I'm hoping that folks in the back room have the appropriate camera angle ready to appreciate this. Member Stewart?
Yes, thank you very much. My wife Sheila and I have three...
Looks great.
Oh, yeah, I gotta, gotta represent. My wife Sheila and I have three wonderful children, we love them all, but our oldest daughter Grace is a student at Villanova University, so she was very excited last night about the men's NCAA basketball championship at her school, and so I wanted to wear this and represent appropriately on her behalf, so congratulations Villanova and Villanova students. A couple of things from the correspondence that I wanted to touch on. The, the people down by Lake Edina are concerned about noise from Highway one hundred, they've had some trees and things taken down because of the construction of the Nine Mile Creek Trail by Three Rivers Park District, and some of them were asking for a sound wall and to be put in, to be put up there. I don't know if people know, sound walls are generally paid for, again, through assessments, so I think if the people in the neighborhood want that, that certainly they can get put in the queue. They should also know that the queue for building sound walls is a fairly long one, so it's a, it's a multi-year process, but some good time to think about that. Similarly, up in the, getting toward the Morningside area up there off of Grimes, there are some residents who've asked to have their electric utility lines and other overhead lines buried. Again, those are things that can be done, but again, they're things that are assessed back to the people in the neighborhood, so that's something that the, the city can help facilitate, if indeed there is really substantial support in the neighborhood for doing that, so want to just invite further discussion on those things as appropriate. I also attended on Thursday, March seventeenth, the seventh grade class at Southview Middle School, had presentations from what they described as an apathy project. This is not a project where the students just say, oh, I don't care, but instead, it's a project where they try to overcome the inertia of apathy and get people excited about different things that they've got some interest in. I was only able to stay for about an hour, so four, or five, or six presentations, but great to see our young folks getting involved and, and having interest in helping to influence their community and make it better. Some things that are coming up, I'm hoping I can attend, there's a group tomorrow meeting called the Green Corps, and it's from four o'clock to six o'clock, and it's in Minneapolis, but I don't have the exact address here. But again, this is a group of young people who are interested in improving the environment, so I'm curious about that. I'm gonna try to get there if, if my schedule permits. Then the next day, Thursday, there's a, I believe it's a dementia care facility called Brookdale Edina, and they're having a reopening on Thursday.
Edina Park Plaza at Edinburgh, renamed.
Okay. And then, I think was mentioned before, on Sunday, the tenth, is the Day of Remembrance, so I'm planning to attend that, that should be great. On Monday, the twelfth, there is a citizenship ceremony at Southview Middle School, which should be interesting. That's kind of in the middle of the day, I'm not sure of the time. And then, coming up, similar, but a little more sophisticated than what the middle school students were doing, the high school students, tenth graders, have their passion projects coming up, so we're looking forward to getting a chance to see some of those, so, thank you.
Thank you. Shirt looks great. Quite a basketball game. Well, Murray, I'm glad you brought up the CAPSH event, because I got a nice email from the, our county commissioner, Jan Callison, who remarked that you have just been a wonderful addition to the CAPSH board, and we're so grateful with respect to your service and the level of professionalism that you bring to that organization. They're very, very pleased with your, your work. So, that was something nice to be able to pass along. Let's see, on the fourth, last Monday, Scott and I went to meet with a bunch of retired residents at the People's Cafe that meet there for coffee, and they had a chance to visit with Scott quite, quite extensively about their thoughts on a variety of topics, especially Braemar. So, he got a lot of good notes out of that meeting. On the thirty-first, we also met with Scott Tankenoff and got a little update on Pentagon Park. And then on the twenty-first, I met with several other mayors with the governor at the residence, because of course the capitol's closed, so we had a nice conversation with him about all of the MLC legislative agenda items, with a particular emphasis on transportation. And then what day was it we were at the capitol testifying? You were, you were both at government operations on the House side, testified on the, met Council Governance Bill, and you testified on some other things that you'll report out on, I'm sure. And then, I also wanted to, really, I want to thank Jim Suhan, I think, for the great article he had in the Star Tribune about Sammy Schmitz. Three full pages on Sammy Schmitz, who's at the Masters this week, but there were an extensive number of quotes from our head professional, who's his coach, who's with him in Augusta this week, Joe Grubner, and it was just a terrific article, and it's nice to have Sammy practicing over there with, with our head professional. As far as Jim Groetz's comments at the beginning of the meeting on their concerns of residents, looking at the two documents that he provided, I take it both of them are the TIF corrective bill.
Yeah.
One on the House side, one on the Senate side, you may want to comment on that in more detail. And the other, only other thing was that Deb Megan and I have been trying to get some information on recognition day for national service. We've gotten an email a couple of weeks ago from somebody who said there were three people in Edina doing mentoring, and they, they didn't give us the names, the name showed up today, and unfortunately, today is the recognition day for national service, so I've got a little bit of information here I thought I'd share with folks. Today is the Fourth Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the twenty-first century and supporting veterans and military... military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. This national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. AMERICOR and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. In Edina, the people providing service are Marie Kelly. She's serving her second term as a K-3 tutor at Cornelia Elementary School. Maggie Hoffman, serving her first year as a K through three, grade three tutor at Concord Elementary, and Sue Toth is serving her second year as a K through third grade tutor at Highlands Elementary. Congratulations and thank you to all of those people. We should recognize them under this National Service Day, so I thank them again for their service.
Mr. Mayor, if I can chime in on one personal note. A member of my family, my oldest son, Jack Staunton, is an AMERICOR worker this year, educating young people at Burnsville High School. So we'll add him to the list.
Thank him as well. Add him to the list for recognition in Edina.
Serving their, serving their communities.
Yeah, thank you for telling us that. That's it for me. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a long list and I'll try to be quick about it. We received notification from the Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training, we call it the Post Board, that they conducted a compliance review of the Edina Police Department on March 22nd, and the department passed their review. So that's, that's important. That doesn't happen very often. Well, happens every time that. Let me clarify that. It happens every time they do a review, but we don't do, they don't get reviewed all that often.
You know, it was a soundbite there. That could have really, you know, been divided up poorly for you.
Sorry, Chief. You know, all the dispatchers are watching this show, too. It's their favorite show on Tuesday nights. I do want to show you this document that was at your, at your seat tonight. This is prepared by the Assessing Division. This is packed full of great information about the city and about the, really, the economic success we've experienced here the last few years. Our growth for 2016 was over $500 million from 2015 to 2016. Extraordinary, the most of, most ever in Edina's history. Our estimated market value now is $10.9 billion, almost $11 billion as a 16-square-mile city. It's extraordinary. It's great news. Bob Wilson and his team do great work in preparing that, that data. Last week was a busy week for me at the Capitol. I've been testifying on a couple of issues that I think you're aware of. One is about franchise fees and a bill that's been put up, first in the House and then in the Senate, restricting how city governments can establish franchise fees. I don't know how I got into that, but I'm the franchise fee guy this year, so I'm helping the League of Cities with that. The second one that the mayor mentioned that Mr. Groetz mentioned while he was here is, he left you a copy of Senate File 2345 and also House File 2401. They're the same bill, and these are the bills that, as Bill Newendorf mentioned earlier, are a curative act for, for a problem. Back in 2014, the state legislature adopted a special law that gave the city of Edina special authority to use the Southdale Two-Tip District to fund affordable housing projects. They, they gave us special dispensation because of, of the extraordinary cost of land in the city and it's really the city's initiative in, in asking the legislature for, to use this money to do affordable housing. So we got some credit for trying there. They adopted the law. The law was signed by the governor. The law came to the city council. The city council accepted the law. You took an action where you approved it. And then, the thing that we didn't do, that we should have done, was we should have really essentially photocopied the bill and mailed a copy of it certified to the Secretary of State's office, which we did not do. That invalidated the law, so when we discovered that, that, that defect in the middle of 2015, we tried to figure out what the remedy is, and the remedy is you go back to the legislature and you ask them to give you another shot. And you do that by asking them to extend the deadline. So the deadline was December 31st, 2014. We're asking them to push that deadline out to December 31st, 2016. So that bill is working its way through both sides now. There's a hearing actually tomorrow in the Senate Tax Committee. Both Representative Earhart and Senator Franzen have been very helpful in putting this together. What we've learned during this process is to not do this ever again, number one. Number two, that this is fairly, I won't say fairly common, but it does happen on occasion. There's three or four of these, it seems like, every session from some cities that don't, aren't used to getting this kind of special law, and there's three, I think there's four of them this session that we are sort of moving forward with. My reign as Chair of the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission has come to an end. I'm going to be the vice chair for the upcoming year. Patty Latham, who some of you may remember, Patty is the chair.
Yeah, she didn't show up at the meeting, so she got to be chair.
So that's why she got to be chair? Good for Patty.
She's an Edina resident.
Edina resident, former Edina staff, now staff at City Metanaca, and Patty is taking over as the chair. April 19th is State of the County, the State of the County event. If you are interested in attending, Heather Branigan is coordinating a Mass RSVP. If you want her to sign up, she can help you with that. Jan Callison, Commissioner Callison is delivering the State of the County address this year, and it's at the Hopkins Center for the Arts. So it's our, you know, our county commissioner delivering it nearby, which is, that doesn't happen very often either. I told you in my Friday report that we are doing some informational interviews with financial advisory consultants. We have completed two of those, and we've got one more to do, and we should be able to bring you a recommendation, or I'll bring you my recommendation at our April 19th.
This is the Mark Ruff replacement.
This is the Mark Ruff replacement, right.
Is it still with Ellers?
We're interviewing Ellers. We're interviewing Springstead and Northland Securities. Those are the three kind of big firms that do municipal advisory work. So that's what we're working on right now. Weber Woods, the city of St. Louis Park did not act on the proposed agreement last night at their council meeting. The city manager says they've, they've recalendered it to April 18th, so we, we.
How do we make them do this?
We wait patiently until they're done, I think. PACS Annual Report. Mark, you may remember, last year Mark Nolan prepared a very nice presentation and report that showed how we spend the money, how we spend the PACS money for 2014. He's got a similar report that he's prepared for 2015. We've got a couple of sidewalk items that are coming up on, do we know yet, Jan, Mar, May? One of the meetings in May.
We got, we got two studies that we'd like to share with you, too, so they're going to be finished up in early May, and we could come to that second meeting in May and do the PACS and those, one's the Ped Bridge at Roslin Park and one's Valley View Road under Highway 62, to give you an update on those two, kind of jive, right, with PACS. We thought it'd be good to do that all at once.
So Mark Nolan night, second meeting in May. Finally, we have a town hall meeting on Saturday morning from 10:00 to noon, April 9th, at the Senior Center.
Senior Center, okay.
That's all I have.
As you were speaking, I was looking through some of my mail, and there is, in the mail, a drop-dead notification from the U.S. Conference of Mayors that the Mayor's 2016 Climate Protection Awards application deadline is Friday, May 6, 2016. And we invite you to apply for the 10th Annual Mayor's Climate Protection Awards to be announced in Indianapolis, Friday, June 24th. Applicants should describe an outstanding and/or innovative program in 500 words or less that your city government has developed. Seems to me that with us on the verge of becoming the first city in Minnesota to have a community solar garden, this might be something worth thinking about and trying to put something in.
500 words or less, I can do.
Yeah.
We do have, Manager Neil, congratulations.
To our city clerk, who has been given the first ever award. Can you define that a little bit better? Because I won't use all the initials for the organization that is recognizing her.
Our, our plan was really to do this on April 19th.
Okay, fine. I'll take it away, and then we'll embarrass her a second time. I like that. I like two opportunities.
We can congratulate her for being a grandmother. How about that?
I would like to congratulate Deb as being, as having Amelia, her first granddaughter. How about that?
And just one more note, I'll tell you, Devin Massapouss, our city management fellow, got a, got a job. So he is going to be the new project coordinator in the Physical Development Division for Dakota County.
Oh, cool.
So that was good, good for him. He starts in, on April 25th, so just a fairly short, short time period.
Great. Wonderful. You've done a great job mentoring these folks and then getting them placed.
Yep, he's, he's gonna, he's gonna do well there.
Anything else for the council? Otherwise, we'll adjourn and reconvene as the HRA. Okay. Councils stand adjourned. Calling to order the Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting for the 5th of April, 2016. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brindle.
Here.
Commissioner Staunton.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Chair Havon.
Here. First thing we have in front of us is the form of meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt a meeting agenda?
So moved, second.
Got a motion, second to adopt a meeting agenda. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. And then, we have some voice vote matters to deal with. First is the approval of the minutes of March 15, 2016, HRA work session, coupled with the March 15, 2016.
Actually, it's a consent agenda, so I'll make a motion to adopt the consent.
Consent agenda.
Second? All right, we've got a motion and a second to adopt a consent agenda. I'm not actually sure if some of these items should be on the consent agenda.
Yeah. Can they be?
They are, all of them. One, two, three, four, five items? Don't require independent action, the backstop beacon or anything? All right. We got a motion, a second to adopt a consent agenda.
So move, vote.
Any further discussion?
All right. No further discussion. I'll vote in favor.
All right, go for it.
I'm ready.
All those in favor. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Anything else for the HRA?
We stand adjourned.